Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. We have a hybrid meeting this morning, so we'll have a roll call. Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Good morning, Kemp.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Hagan.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Overman.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
White.
Here.
Thank you. You have a form?
Thank you. So first, we are going to have a pledge and invocation by our chaplain, Commissioner White. Commissioner White, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll ask that everyone please stand at this time for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Heavenly Father, I pray that you will guide this board, our staff, and stakeholders as we make important decisions this morning. We are thankful for all of those who are going to be recognized for various outstanding things in our community today, and pray that you'll continue to guide them. And as always, Lord, I send out prayers and give our thanks for all of our first responders and members of our armed forces. Pray that you will guide them, comfort them each and every day. I give these thanks and ask for these blessings in your heavenly name. Amen.
Thank you, and we have three recognitions today, and the recipients are joining us virtually. Commissioner Overman, would you please present the first recognition?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. I see we have Clara Reynolds, the president of the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, present, and I believe Frank Strom, who is the director of Hillsborough County Community Consumer and Veterans Services. Mr. Strom, are you present?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Commissioner.
Excellent. Good to see you. Thank you very much for joining us today. Hillsborough County is home to more than 95,000 veterans. These brave men and women have served and sacrificed so much for our country. I am proud to live in a county that recognizes their service by providing them support, to connect them with the resources that they have earned. One of the greatest challenges veterans face in accessing quality mental health care. The suicide risk for veterans who lack the necessary care is high. The good news is Hillsborough County and its community partners, including the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, are resolute in their mission to help our veterans heal, hope, and thrive. In honor of the hard work the Crisis Center has done for its veterans, it is my pleasure to present this proclamation to Ms. Reynolds, declaring September as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Hillsborough County. The proclamation reads, whereas suicide is a national public health issue, and suicide prevention for our nation's veterans is the highest clinical priority for the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. And whereas research shows that the suicide risk for veterans who do not receive mental health care is higher than those who do receive treatment, and whereas suicide prevention includes suicide first aid training for friends, family, clergy, and clinicians, who should directly ask about a person's intention for suicide, which is recognized as the first step to getting help. And whereas Presidential Executive Order 13822 addresses transition-related challenges by providing mental health care to newly discharged service members and veterans for at least one year following the separation of duty. And whereas Hillsborough County recognizes the importance of suicide prevention in our community and the debt owed to the members of the military who pledge their lives to protect our nation, and whereas no single organization can end veteran suicide, it is essential that all public-private sector stakeholder partners to ensure all service members and veterans receive quality mental health care. And whereas connection to suicide prevention resources is essential, and the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay, 211, James Haley Veterans Hospital, Mission United, and Hillsborough County Veteran Services and Healthcare Services are committed to ensuring that no veteran faces a crisis alone. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Board of County Commission of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare September 2021 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to expand their awareness of suicide prevention and those resources available to veterans to show their support in helping them seek the mental health care they need. Executed this first day of September 2021, signed by all seven commissioners. Thank you very much for being here today. And Ms. Reynolds, would you like to say a few words?
Yes, please, and thank you so much to Vice Chair Overman for facilitating this proclamation into the entire county commission. Every population is impacted by suicide. Children, teens, adults, healthcare professionals, first responders, the elderly, and especially our veterans. And yet, we're still hesitant to talk about behavioral health challenges, but they are absolutely real. In fact, on August 12th of 2021, just two weeks ago, the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay took 31 suicide calls from Hillsborough County citizens struggling in need of help and support. And from October 1st through July 31st of 2021, 151 veterans reached out on the verge of suicide to the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay. We have a long way to go, but I really want to send a shout out this morning to Tampa Bay Rays and to Brandon and Madison Lau. Brandon Lau is a second baseman for the Rays and through the Rays Foundation has created the Home Runs for Hope program. Brandon and Madison are watching right now, and every time Brandon hits a home run, information about suicide awareness is displayed. And this year, over 31 home runs have been hit, so thank you to the Rays. For anybody out there who is struggling, please know you don't have to face this crisis alone. Right here in your community, you can receive help, hope, and healing by calling the National Suicide Prevention Helpline at 1-800-273-TALK or simply by calling 211. You will find the help, hope, and healing that you need in partnership with us at the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay and so many community providers like Mission United and the great work of our Veterans Resource Center. So thank you all so very much for this very honorable recognition in, again, Recognition of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month.
Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. I remember when you first were setting up the Veterans Hotline and how critically important it was to make sure that you had not only the resources available, but also veterans available to speak the same language so that that kind helpfulness and that connection can be made in order to save someone's life. And so thank you very, very much for the work that you do. Mr. Strom, would you like to share a few thoughts?
Yes. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Overman, for being a leader in this important awareness campaign to prevent suicide among our nation's active-duty military and veterans within our community and abroad. Our community remains committed to building partnerships with military, civilian, and governmental leaders in order to attack head-on the issue of preventing suicide among service members, veterans, and their families. For our veterans, crises can be heightened by their experiences during military service, the current COVID pandemic, or even the memories surrounding the upcoming 20th anniversary of 9/11. It is important now more than ever that we remain steadfast in providing resources in order to mitigate potential crises. Our past and future efforts are focused on incorporating evidence-based strategies that will immediately reduce and eventually eliminate suicide among our nation's heroes. We are proud to stand here today with our partners from the Crisis Center of Tampa Bay as they rightfully receive this recognition on behalf of our community partners. My colleague, Ms. Reynolds, and her team have provided invaluable resources in providing supportive services through 211, understanding the issues surrounding suicide prevention, and actively engaging with county and state stakeholders in order to better align prevention efforts. We sincerely thank them for all their hard work. And also, I would like to thank our entire Board of County Commissioners and County Administrator, Ms. Wise, for your continued support of our community, our active-duty service members, veterans, and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strom. I truly appreciate those words. The commitment that Hillsborough County has made to those that have served our country, whether that be law enforcement or veterans, those that oftentimes see things that none of us ever want to see. So thank you very, very much for supporting those individuals that are in crisis and making sure that they have the resources they know and have, to make sure they know they're loved and appreciated for the work that they do. With that, I'll turn it back over to Chair Kemp. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next recognition this morning is by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our Diane Cortez, President of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Tampa Bay, and Ellie Rodriguez, Hillsborough County's Community Affairs Liaison, here today.
Yes.
Yes.
Good morning, and welcome. It is such a pleasure to recognize and celebrate the history, culture, and contributions of all Hispanic Americans, including those whose ancestors come from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. It is a special honor for me to present this Hispanic Heritage Month proclamation because I am half Hispanic myself. My mother was Cuban, and my own family's Cuban roots go back several generations in Tampa. I feel very deeply that our local Hispanic culture is an integral part of what makes Tampa Tampa and enriches our community. Hispanic Americans are vital to the prosperity of Hillsborough County, the state of Florida, and the United States. Their legacy helps strengthen our county's economy, education, cultural growth, and diversity. Every year, Hillsborough County recognizes September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month. I am very excited to present this proclamation to Ms. Cortez, which honors the numerous accomplishments made by Hispanic Americans today and throughout our county's history. And at this point, I will read the proclamation, which will be delivered to you. It reads, whereas one of the greatest treasures of the United States is the diversity of its people, and Hispanic Americans are an integral part of the nation. And whereas, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, over 62 million Hispanic Americans live in the United States, the nation's largest minority ethnic group, with more than 5 million in Florida and over 420,000 in Hillsborough County, nearly 30% of the county's population. And whereas, the vibrant Hispanic influence can be seen in all aspects of American life and culture, including the arts, sciences, business world, academia, the U.S. Armed Forces, athletics, and government. And whereas Hispanic Americans' contributions enrich the nation's heritage and helped establish the United States as a beacon of freedom and opportunity, illustrating all that is best about the nation. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Week was commenced under President Lyndon Johnson in 1968 to pay tribute to Hispanic Americans and was broadened by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover a 30-day period, starting on September 15 and ending on October 15. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month celebrates the achievements of Hispanic Americans and recognizes the numerous contributions of local Hispanic-American leaders who have positively impacted Hillsborough County, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby declare September 15 through October 15, 2021, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Hillsborough County, and encourages all residents and visitors to celebrate the numerous contributions of Hispanic Americans to the nation, state, and Hillsborough County. And that's executed this first day of September and signed by all seven commissioners. So at this point, Ms. Rodriguez, would you like to share your thoughts as we present this recognition to Ms. Cortez and the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, Tampa Bay?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, and all the members of the Hillsborough Board of County Commissioners for recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. I have the distinct pleasure of working with the Hispanic community every day here in Hillsborough County. The Hispanic nonprofits and organizations are always prepared to help their fellow citizen. They organize back-to-school backpack giveaways, collect hurricane supplies, provide scholarships to students in need, organize food drives and COVID-19 supply events. We thank you for all the contributions and dedication to the community during times of plenty and in times of need. At this time, I'd like to introduce the leader of one of these organizations, Diana Cortez, President of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, who will accept the proclamation on behalf of the Hispanic community. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Tampa Bay and the Hispanic community, we are honored to receive this proclamation. We thank the Hillsborough Commissioner Office for declaring September 15 through October 15 Hispanic Heritage Month. We celebrate culture, family, neighborhood, and most of all, our country, the United States of America, home of millions of Hispanics, and Florida, and our Hillsborough County for recognizing the effort and the contribution of the Hispanic community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cortez. Very well said. And thank you for being with us today to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. And at this point, I will turn it back over to our chair.
Thank you. And our final recognition this morning will be presented by Commissioner Myers. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are Aaron Knighton and the representatives from Hillsborough High School here today?
Yes.
Good morning. When you are just 17 years old, still in high school, and are being compared to one of the greatest Olympians of our time, you are special, and Aaron Knighton is special. Aaron is a senior at Hillsborough High, has been running track less than three years. Yet, a few weeks ago, he returned from Tokyo, where he represented our nation as a member of the U.S. Track Team, and the youngest one in many years. Simply qualifying for the team is an incredible achievement. But already, Aaron has captured the attention of some of the world's greatest athletes. A sprinter, he is being compared to Usain Bolt of Jamaica, who won eight gold medals during a spectacular Olympic career. Aaron, in fact, has already broken two of Mr. Bolt's records. He did his nation, county, and school proud by making the 200 meters finals in Tokyo, an astonishing achievement for a young athlete who is just beginning what I am sure would be a career for the ages. I am certain that we will see you on the medal podium many times in the future. I have the following commendation I would like to present to you. It reads, the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Aaron for his fourth-place finish in the men's 200 meters finals at the 2021 Tokyo Olympics, an amazing feat for the record-setting 17-year-old Hillsborough County public school student. A senior at Hillsborough High in Tampa, Mr. Knighton is the youngest male athlete to represent the United States in track at the Olympics since Jim Run in 1964. His potential has no limits as he demonstrated by breathtaking performance in the months before the Olympics when he broke the icon Jamaican sprinter Usain Bolt under 18 and under 20 records in the 200 meters. In Tokyo, Mr. Knighton won his semifinal heat to advance to the 200 meters final in extraordinary triumph in itself. Facing older, more experienced, and more developed runners in the final, Mr. Knight finished fourth, the youngest U.S. athlete to so place in an Olympic track event since the great Wilmer Rudolph in 1956. His outstanding achievement earned him accolades from the broadcasters and fellow athletes, richly deserving praise for the fastest high school senior on earth. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida, does hereby commend Aaron Knighton for his incredible performance on the world stage and for representing his community and country with dignity and humility, and wishes him continued success in track and life. Executed this first day of September 2021, signed by all seven commissioners. Young handsome-looking man, I know there is something you would like to say. Look at that handsome smile. Aaron, share some of your comments with us this morning, please.
Yes, ma'am. How is everyone doing? My name is Aaron Knighton. I am a senior at Hillsborough High School. I'd like to thank my coaches, my family, and all my teachers for supporting me. I am proud to represent Tampa, Florida, Hillsborough High School, and Hillsborough County. And in 2021 Olympics, it was actually a blessing, and I was just happy to be there to represent.
Well, we're happy to have you to represent us. Continue to hold your head up, run high. We know when the next Olympia comes, you will be standing there at that podium with several gold medals in your hand. Thank you for representing our county, our state, and our country. Madam Chair?
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to thank Commissioner Myers for bringing up this special commendation here. I want to congratulate Mr. Knighton on outstanding performance. You are one heck of an athlete. My daughter is a freshman at Hillsborough High School, so I can tell you that the entire school is so very, very proud of you and your outstanding work, and just keep up the great job.
Great, and we will be watching you. I don't know if we can keep our eyes on you, but we'll try. Might be going too fast. But with that, I want to thank all our recipients for joining us today and for everything you do to make Hillsborough County a great place to live. And with that, we will move on to approval for changes to the agenda and if we have a motion with regards to that.
I have to go through the changes.
I did this before. Go ahead.
No problem. We have a few changes today. We have one off-the-agenda item by Commissioner Overman. Item F1 is to direct staff to prepare a letter of support to the Florida Department of Transportation to light the Bob Graham Sunshine Skyway Bridge pink during the month of October to commemorate Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We have one item that is deferred, item B4, which is to approve an inter-local joint protect project agreement with Tampa Bay Water for design and construction of a new water delivery pipeline. This is deferred for a date to be determined. We have one correction. Item A15 is to approve an application requesting the conveyance of county-owned delinquent tax lands located at 2803 East Ellicott Street. That was a correction to the name of the street. Item B1 is a time certain at 10:45 to approve the resolution and memorandum of understanding as a partial settlement subject to the completion of formal documents of Hillsborough County's opioid litigation lawsuit. Item G2 is now a time certain, 11:00 a.m., to receive a report regarding customers of Olympus pools. Item A31 has been removed from consent by Commissioner Smith, which is to award three-year contracts to a pre-qualified list of firms for ongoing as-needed land development policy and regulation consulting services for the Development Services Department. Our public hearings, first one, item D1, at 10:00 a.m. is to hold a public hearing and approve the fiscal year 2022 Heart Capital Improvement Program list of projects funded by transportation improvement, transportation impact fees, per the inter-local agreement with Heart. Item D2 is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution which enables, establishes the stormwater management, non-advalorem assessment rates, and non-advalorem assessment role for calendar year 2021. Item G3 at 10:15 is to receive a report on local pandemic-related data, recovery programs, and strategic investments related to COVID-19. Item B1 at 10:45 is to approve the resolution and memorandum of understanding as a partial settlement subject to the completion of formal documents of Hillsborough County's opioid litigation lawsuit. Item G2 at 11:00 a.m., receive a report regarding customers of Olympus pools, 11:45 recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Move the changes?
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, seconded by Commissioner Myers, to move the changes, seeing no further discussion. Please do a roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to public comments. The Board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing input to the board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against a commissioner or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides a mutual respect between the board members and the public. The Board has set aside a 45-minute period in the morning immediately following changes to the agenda for public comments. At the discretion of the chair, the Board may hear public comments at the end of the meeting. Anyone who wishes to speak virtually or in person during the meeting may do so by completing the online public comment form found at hcflgov.net/speakup. The form is open for public sign-up 48 hours prior to the start of the meeting. An option is available to notify whether comments will be provided virtually or in person at the meeting. Additionally, in-person speakers will be able to sign up on-site via kiosk or smartphone the day of the meeting. For participants who wish to speak virtually, who have completed the online form, an audio call-in number will be provided to you after the form is received by the county. All speakers will be required to provide their name, email address, and telephone number on the online form. This information is being requested to facilitate the public comment process. Sign-ups for both virtual and in-person public speaking opportunity for public hearings and public comments close at 9:00 a.m. on the day of the meeting. The chair will call on speakers by name in order which the requests to speak have been received. Prioritization is on a first-come, first-served basis. The boardroom and the multipurpose room are designed for, designated for speakers only. Those who have come to county center to watch the meeting and not speak will be accommodated in the lobby area. Only the first 12 in-person sign-ups will be allowed in the boardroom for public comment. Anyone speaking in the boardroom must wear a mask. The multipurpose room will be available for residents who signed up to speak after the first 12 people have registered or for those who cannot wear a mask due to a medical condition. Speakers are asked to leave the boardroom or multipurpose room after sharing their comments with the board. All virtual speakers will be muted upon joining the meeting and will be unmuted after being recognized by the chair by name. Up to three minutes will be allowed for each speaker. And with that, we will recognize our first speaker this morning, Jason Kimball.
Okay, so first, you know, I can't believe that Commissioner Overman has the gall to recognize suicide victims.
Uh, excuse me, please. Excuse me. Excuse me, sir. We ask that you don't address any of the commissioners by name.
Yeah, so don't interrupt my public comment if I'm not violating board rules or policies.
Well, you are. We announced the board rules before, so please refrain and stick to the policies.
No, no, no. You made a request. Are you saying it's a rule that I can't? Because you said "we request." That's not a rule. Are you saying it's a rule that I can't address particular board members?
Just continue your comments.
Okay, so first of all, regarding the report that you guys love to look at, the total misrepresentative report that does not give you the facts about any sort of a pandemic, that does not include crucial numbers. I see that you have another one scheduled for today, one that you guys are basing all of your unlawful tyrannical mandates on. First of all, I want to assure everyone in there that we have a huge group of people, I'm right outside the- I'm right outside the Frederick V. Carl County Center right now, we have a huge group of people with all of the names and faces of the county commissioners who are trying to mandate masks, who are saying that we can't go into the boardroom, who are saying that we have to wear a mask to go into any county facility. We're protesting, you guys. People are taking out their phones and they're documenting your names, your photos, they're posting it on social media, number one. Number two, just about the vaccine, which I know you guys are heavily pushing, you know, if there was a traditional vaccine like Novavax that uses proteins to produce an immune response, maybe you wouldn't have so much vaccine hesitancy. Maybe people don't want to inject mRNA that interacts with their cells and expresses the S protein on their cells. Maybe they just want a traditional vaccine that the Florida Department of Health isn't approving, the FDA isn't approving. And then finally, I just want to make the point of Commissioner Overman's Facebook message that she posted saying that kids should be forced to wear colored lanyards like they did in Nazi Germany because their parents decided not to get them vaccinated or their parents aren't vaccinated. That's a Nazi Germany policy, and we totally oppose that, and we're going to let everyone know that you said that. And that's my public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff Dell.
Yes. Okay. Thank you for your time, Board. I'm here today to talk about the mask mandate. My name is Jeff Dow. I mentioned last time I was here that I'm former military. I have raised my hand several times to swear an oath to the country. Today, I'm here to remind you of your oath. I do solemnly swear that I will support, defend, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and of the state of Florida. Support, protect, defend. Have you actually read the Florida Constitution, specifically Article 1, Sections 1 to 27? I'm going to assume two of you have read it, the other five probably have not, because if you have, you would have known that it has not given you the authority to put these measures in place. The founders of the Constitution were well aware of plagues, and yet they did not put anything in there about the suspension of our rights when a health crisis comes along. Let's talk about that for a second. Health crisis. What an interesting time we live in, where a number of us know more young, healthy people who have died of a heart attack within days of getting one of these shots than we have of anyone who's actually died of COVID itself. I'm still waiting on the data to come in from USF. These USF doctors say that they can test for the Delta specifically. If that's the case, I want to see the week-to-week breakdown of COVID, of the Alpha variant, and deaths from 2020. I want to see the week-to-week breakdown of COVID, of the Delta variant, and deaths from 2021. If you can test for this variant, you should be able to separate it out. Your online dashboard deals in graphs and percentages, but doesn't show actual numbers or where those numbers came from. Forgive me if I don't trust any of this. If it is publicly available data, where is it stored so that I can access it? I'm tired of the shell games. We, the people, will not be locking down a second time. We will not be forced to wear masks any longer or get these shots. We are organizing, we are mobilizing, we are working on lawsuits, as well as recall efforts. If you think that you, that we are going anywhere, you are sadly mistaken. We will only be bringing more people out to each of these meetings, and if you believe that you can silence us by going virtual, we will continue to protest outside of this building until you stop. We will no longer be compliant with your authoritarian measures. Hosea 4:6 says, "My people perish for lack of knowledge." You got one over on us last time because we didn't know the process. We do now. Last time I was here, I was told four times, quote, "Your time is up," end quote. I want it to be known to this body, to those of you who overstep your authorities and infringe on the rights of we, the people, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Bowles?
Chris Bowles with Hillsborough County Firefighters. How are y'all? Come before you to offer some reflection, some recognition, and to make an appeal. Saturday next week will mark the 20th anniversary of the September 11th attack on our country. Some of us were remembering the 2,977 people that were killed that day. Seventy-one of those were police officers, 343 were firefighters. I'm reminded of this every time I walk into my office. I have a piece of the steel from the Creed Center there in my office, and that was given to me from a firefighter in New York City. You may not know this, but two days afterwards, I spent two weeks on Ground Zero assisting with the search and rescue efforts. It's not an experience I'd like to relive, but it's certainly one that I was thankful to be there, to offer some assistance. Our jobs as first responders are difficult, though. Certainly given the inherent elements of danger and uncertainty with them. 9/11 was certainly a reality check with that, and today's no different. You know, given the uncertainty we have with this pandemic, the hardships that people are facing, the fallout, the uncertainties that come along with it, and the volatility of all this, you know, creates a crazy, crazy effort out there. And in spite of these risks, we still show up to work every day, our first responders. We do our job, we do the best we can, and we do this knowingly, because that's what we, we're there to do. For this, our first responders, some of them downstairs, some outside, and around this country and county, deserve that recognition. I'd also like to thank all of you, though, you that are here and virtually, for your support, mutual efforts that you've given us, public safety, infrastructure, and first responders here, over the last few years, you've really stepped up and made some steps forward, and you deserve that. All of you are responsible for that, and the positive steps and gains we've made with that are really important. However, there's still work to be done. Our collective focus and efforts have to still remain on the documented community needs. We know what those are. We can't let your good work slip by us as it has in the past. We've made these efforts to move forward. We need to prioritize a phased approach to implementing the master plan. We need to keep Tallahassee out of our backyards so that we can continue to look for resources here locally to fund this explosive growth we have. And we need to have meaningful collaborative discussion with external stakeholders to encourage citizen-first policies and procedures. I ask you to consider this. Please note that the Hillsborough County firefighters, men and women, support you and your efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, thank you for your service, and it's, thank you for bringing forward 9/11 in your service there. It's painful, I think, to be thinking about this, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Corey Bone?
Commissioners, my name is Corey Bone, and I'm here today both as a Hillsborough County firefighter and as a concerned citizen. I was born and raised here. Four generations of my family have resided in the Brandon area. My passion has always been to serve, and that is why I became a firefighter. In July of 2020, I started my HCFR career. I spent the first month learning the skills necessary to become a successful firefighter EMT. However, I never thought that my skills would be put to the test so quickly, and on a loved one, no less. August 7, 2020, will always be a day for me, excuse me, where I experienced both great humility and honor, but will also be one of my darkest days. This was the day I was sworn in as a Hillsborough County firefighter. My entire family was proudly in attendance at this ceremony. An hour later, as I was driving home to celebrate with my family, my sister called me to say that my father, Alan Bone, who was only 62 years old, had collapsed and wasn't breathing. Call it divine intervention if you are a faith believer like myself, but I had just turned off at the wrong exit that actually put me closer to his house than my own. I could hear my mother on the phone with 911 while I coached my sister on how to perform CPR. I arrived at his home in the Brandon area about six minutes after I got that call, and I was expecting to see my fellow brothers and sisters already on scene. Unfortunately, no units were there yet. I took over CPR for my sister. At the time, there were five stations in the area, in his response area, that are five to 10 minutes away. None of them were available, and the closest ambulance was responding from 17 minutes away, coming from Bloomingdale. There are actually six, six other ambulances that are stationed at those five closer stations than the rescue that responded. Sadly, none of them were available at the time of my father's emergency. Waiting for the rescue to arrive felt like an eternity. Thirty minutes passed before my father finally had a pulse again, and five days later, my family had to make the gut-wrenching decision to remove my father from life support and let him go home to be with the Lord. Commissioners, our success as first responders and the patient's outcome are measured in seconds, not minutes. The crews that responded did everything right. They gave my father the best chance at life, however, they were just too far away, and they could not be in there in time to change his outcome. His heart and his brain had been without oxygen for just too long. I ask that you focus on the fire rescue's master plan that outlines a straightforward path to filling the existing gaps, shortening the response times, and augmenting our EMS system. I believe that if this plan had been prioritized since its inception in 2003, my father might still be alive today. He would have had the opportunity to watch me marry the love of my life, to see his future grandchildren, and live out the rest of his dreams. So please, I implore you to continue to plan for the future and focus on the master plan that maps out the life-saving services needed for our citizens that you represent, so this heartache doesn't happen to another family. Thank you.
Thank you again for your service, and thank you for sharing that painful story with us, but thank you. Megan Petty?
Good morning, members of the Board. I am a resident of Hillsborough County out in Brandon, and I just wanted to say that regarding the mask mandates, that our governor has already declared that there is no longer COVID emergency in the state of Florida, and that the First District Court, Appeals Court of Florida has already declared that the mask mandates are a violation of our right of privacy contained in the Florida Constitution. Also, the fact that we are required to wear a mask here in this place limits our ability to engage in government that we've created here in Florida, since there's only just very few here and that actually get to speak, so we really don't get a sense of really how people feel about it. And then personally, I don't really like masks because I know from what they've discovered that masks actually pick up bacteria and pathogens when you wear them, the very first time, and they become a hazard to our health and also a biohazard. And of course, as we all know, we're more not likely to throw away our masks every time we wear them and get a new one, but that's actually what we should be doing. So the masks are actually doing us a service. I think actually they are actually hazardous and doing us a disservice, and so I don't believe that is the answer to what we're looking for, which is our health. And so I would ask you to consider that, but I do appreciate the fact that I do believe that we all want what's best for our Hillsborough County residents, and I just want to thank you for your service.
Thank you. Michael Derrick?
Yes, thank you. I'm a resident of Hillsborough County here in Plant City. I'm very concerned right now, but first of all, I want to let you guys know, let's remind ourselves that COVID has a survival rate of 99.9%. I mean, if you go back into the days of true pandemics, the plague and different things like that, I mean, we're looking at survival rates of 60%. So that's not the case here, and we need to use common sense as we move forward. Some other common sense that we need to have is the fact that our governor, who is our ultimate authority in the state and who's following the Constitution, which is really our true authority, the Florida State Constitution, has declared that there is no more COVID emergency restrictions in place in the state of Florida. And with that being said, that puts the, this commission in defiance of those, of that statement and his, his plan. So at this point, you know, we're putting ourselves here in Hillsborough County at risk by defying the governor. And it's amazing how, you know, when it comes to money, you guys follow the letter of the law to make sure that you get your money. And I'm very concerned that we may find ourselves in a position where we get funds cut off, and deservedly so, because we're not following what we're being told to do. And you guys want us to follow mask mandates and all these things, but you're not following what Tallahassee is telling us to do. So I'm very concerned about that, very concerned that you're also violating court rules and rules of law that has already been instituted, and you're going to open us up for a lot more lawsuits, which, you know, will have to be defended with taxpayer money, and that's just not right. And I believe that at this time, it's, it's very imperative that you guys wake up and start to do what we're supposed to do and follow the orders of the governor of the state of Florida. And you wonder why the people are defying you? You're defying the governor, and I'm very concerned about that, and it's time that you guys start doing what's right and give the people the opportunity to make the decisions for themselves. If they want to wear a mask, you know, whether they believe it's, it works or not, that they're right, and it's also their right not to. And if you're going to start getting involved in these things, you need to start showing some proof, some actual data that is not fabricated, that proves these things, because right now, the science is against you. And I thank you for the time and the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you. Ebony Penn?
Hello? Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I am a resident of Hillsborough County. I've been here my entire life, born and raised, and I just wanted to come here to speak to you guys about the disappointment that I see currently going on with the tyrannical government that is currently being ran in a place that I am residing in currently. I also have a youth business. It's called Confidence Inside Out, so obviously, I am very passionate about our youth, and our youth are our future. I am very sickened to my stomach to see that we are one of the counties, or the cities, I'll say, that are mandating vaccines, something that no one has clearly done any research on, because if you have, you would see that giving these vaccines, it definitely causes harmful, very, very harmful side effects, such as enlarged blood clotting. It also turns your once-to-be-round blood cells to look like basically shredded lettuce, to say in layman's terms, which is also part of the reason why your blood clots. There's actually a blood clotting machine that you can purchase on your own if you are vaccinated to prove this theory yourself, and there's tons and tons of peer-reviewed studies from people with PhDs and who study microbiology and anatomy and physiology and not just your average bachelor's degree of general physician. And I am very concerned that no information is being presented to people who are being forced to be vaccinated because you guys are currently requiring the city of Tampa employees. That is a huge violation of the rights, huge violation of the Constitution, and you guys actually prayed right before we started this whole meeting, from what I heard, and it kind of goes against, that is very hypocritical to pray to God and then turn around and mandate such a crazy, tyrannical, Nazi form of mandate. Same thing goes for the mask as well. We should most definitely have the right to tell our children what we want them to do because we are their parents. There's no reason why kids overseas, for example, are being confiscated from their parents and being forced to do vaccines. Yes, I understand that we currently aren't doing that right now, however, based off of what we are currently headed, we are definitely on the same slippery slope to that same type of lifestyle. Yes, I understand that we currently aren't doing that right now, however, based off of what we are currently headed, we are definitely on the same slippery slope to that same type of lifestyle, and that is not cool. It is not right. It is very, very much tyrannical and dictatorship going on right now. So I am definitely calling to speak about that. I also want to talk about how all these towers are appearing on top of buildings where people sleep at night, such as the downtown Sunrise Building. Pretty much every single building that you see, they're installing these towers on top of the buildings, and they are not informing the residents of these towers. They are not informing the residents-
Your time is up. Your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
Okay, I'm done.
Adam Geffen? Geffkin? Yes.
Okay, awesome. Okay, cool. Sweet. All right, thanks, guys, for your time.
Can you please put your mask up?
Okay, yeah.
Up, covering your, thank you.
Protects it. Okay, cool. All right, let me do this here. Thank you, guys, for your time. I'm here to speak against mask mandates in schools and any future mask mandates, if such plans exist. It sounds like that may be the case. The science is clear, masks don't work, so why are we still wearing them? I truly want to give most people the benefit of the doubt. I think that our problem as a society is that we lack two things. We lack courage, and we lack the desire to look into things for ourselves and do our own due diligence. I encourage everyone here watching to do your own research. Don't listen to the news. Don't listen to CNN's two doctors. Listen to the dozens of doctors that Big Tech is censoring. That should tell you all you need to know. Dr. Dan Stock, Dr. Simone Gold, Dr. Ryan Fleming, the list goes on. This is America. We have the freedom to do what we want, even more so, God has given us the right and the ability to have free will, to choose what we want. That's what's so great about America compared to every other country and communist country in history. The problem that we don't seem to see is that our ignorance is dividing us over something that isn't a true pandemic, okay? And that's what we have to be honest about. Listen to the people calling in. They're afraid to lose their freedom. The Spanish Flu, that was a true pandemic. It actually killed people. If you got it, it was a death sentence. COVID is not that, and we all know that. How do I know? Because most of us here have probably had it. Dr. Fauci has admitted multiple times that masks don't work, and he actually did a study in 2008 when he was researching why the Spanish Flu was so deadly, and it turns out bacterial pneumonia was the primary cause, and where does bacterial pneumonia happen? These face masks that nobody changes, and it's been 20 months, and a lot of people haven't even changed their cloth face masks. The social and psychological implications of wearing a mask are also bad, right? This is dehumanizing me. You can't see me. I can't see you. We all know this. We go to the grocery store, and nobody smiles at anybody anymore. It's actually pretty sad. Okay, if you want to talk about suicide awareness, let's stop the draconian mask mandates and lockdowns and ostracizing people and dividing them. That's not helping. Child and teen suicide rate has skyrocketed during COVID. I think we can all admit that. Again, if we do our due diligence, it takes a quick Google search, Google will tell you all the answers you need. Unfortunately, that nobody thinks anymore. The last thing I want to say is the 10 stages of genocide. People should look this stuff up, okay? 10 stages of genocide. Classification is number one. Okay, the differences between people are not respected. We can see that. Symbolization, masks, symbolization, hello? Okay, this is a visual manifestation of hatred, and that's what's happening. People think that you're bad if you don't want to wear a mask, when again, there's no science to back this up. Discrimination, case in point. Dehumanization, already talked about that. Organization, that's number five. Polarization, this is where America is right now. Okay, now you've got people, now you've got people that are polarized-
Your time is up. Thank you.
Look into the genocide thing.
Teri Rock?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I would like to know what standing that the commissioners are using for looking at putting in the next mask mandate. We have a governor who put out an order, and I would like to know if the judge that rescinded his order actually is a doctor as well. Where did he get his information? None of this information is out there for us to get. I am a COVID survivor. I had it very bad, but I've also had the flu very bad. And I guess right now, I'm a little upset because I'm looking at several of our commissioners who are looking at me, and I'm looking at several that are looking down. So I feel like my voice is being basically descended. I have a beautiful 17-year-old granddaughter who last week, for the first time in her life, gave blood. She found out she has antibodies. She has never been sick, and she has continued to do everything, work a full-time job, go to school. She's NHS. She's done everything, but she has antibodies and was never sick a day in her life. I've never heard anybody in the board speak about vitamins. Vitamins are very, very important to help us ward off whatever this is, because to my knowledge, it's never, never been isolated. No doctor, I have medical all through my family, no medical has ever figured out what this is. So how can we put a mask mandate order out, again, because I've spoke before, when we don't even know what this is, until it's isolated, until they know exactly what's going on, until they know how to deal with it? You know, masks don't work. It's quite clear. Look at the hospitals right now, whether they're vaccinated or unvaccinated, it really doesn't matter. It's still out there. People are surviving it. We have antibodies that are natural. We have the monoclonal that are artificial but are working. So, you know, we just need to know that when the decision is made here by this board, that it's done with all the right information and not just the, I'm looking at whatever another county does or another state does, just the full facts. And we'd like you to expose the full facts of how you make the decision, because that in itself makes a big difference to us as the people of Hillsborough County, and we would like for you to do what we want as a county. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will close our public comment this morning and move on to the rest of our agenda. We'll move to our consent agenda at this time. A31's been removed.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Cohen, to move the consent agenda. Seeing no further discussion, please do a roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you, and we'll be hearing A31 at the end of the meeting, and with that, we'll move to our regular agenda. Ms. Wise?
I think it's basically 10 o'clock by the time I introduce this item, and the first item is Item D1. This is to hold a public hearing and approve the fiscal year 2022 HART Capital Improvement Program list of projects funded by the transportation impact fees pursuant to the interlocal agreement with HART, and Jim Hudak will present this item. This is a public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jim Hudak, Capital Programs Department. Commissioners, Item D1, we are asking you to hold a public hearing and approve the FY2022 HART Capital Improvement Program list of projects funded by the transportation impact fees per the interlocal agreement with HART, and also to earmark up to $321,502.65 in transportation impact fees over the next five years, subject to actual collections for the HART Capital Improvement Program in accordance with the Hillsborough County Consolidated Impact Assessment Program ordinance. HART is requesting up to $64,303.53 in the impact fee funds for the fiscal year 2022. Approval of this item will earmark up to $321,502.65 in transportation impact fees over the next five years, subject to actual collections in accordance with the Hillsborough County Consolidated Impact Assessment Program ordinance. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Smith, you, well, there is no public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak, so we'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing, and Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. These funds are mostly for ADA improvements at bus stops. I'll be delighted to make a motion to approve this item and earmark the funds. I did ask a couple of questions about this from staff, and just so you all understand, as it says in the item, transportation impact fees are gradually being replaced by mobility fees since January 2017. So the amount of actual impact fees collected will depend on the number of grandfathered projects still subject to them. So as we're replacing impact fees with mobility fees, I think I'm going to be wanting to look more into how we can use mobility fees to supplement our transit program as well. Because, you know, mobility fees, when we transition from transportation concurrency and transportation impact fees to mobility fees, we were told that the mobility fees could be used for alternative transportation, as well as road improvements, transit, bicycle and pedestrian safety, infrastructure as well. But what I'm learning right now is that mobility fees can be used for capacity-enhancing HART projects or other kind of alternative transportation, but for HART, they can be used for capacity-enhancing projects that are part of the agency's transit development plan. However, pursuant to the mobility fee ordinance, an interlocal agreement would have to be entered into prior to that happening. So I wonder if our county attorney has anything to add to that, because I think we, you know, we might want to look at making progress in that area as we transition from these impact fees into mobility fees to keep it going.
Commissioner, the only thing I would add is that what you just stated is absolutely correct, and at the direction of the board, staff can be directed to begin that process, if that's your desire.
Great. I will make that motion after I make the motion for this. Thank you very much. So I'll move this item to Section A and B, approve the HART CIP list of projects funded by transportation impact fees and earmark up to $321,502.65 in transportation impact fees over the next five years.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Cohen, by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Cohen at this time, seeing no further discussion. Can we please have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And Commissioner Smith?
Thank you. So at this time, I'd like to make the motion that I discussed that to direct county staff and our county attorneys to begin the process of creating an interlocal agreement, looking into that with HART, to be entered into in order to continue the process of using these mobility fees to fund some capacity at HART the way we've used transportation impact fees.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Overman, and seeing no further discussion. Thanks for raising that, and I think it's important, as we move forward, to have that worked out. Seeing no further discussion, can we please have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And with that, we'll move to the next item. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The next item is Item D2. This is to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution establishing the stormwater non-advalorem assessment rates, and Josh Bellotti will take us through a short presentation. This is a public hearing.
Good morning, Commissioners. Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations Department. This is a public hearing to set the stormwater assessment rates for calendar year 2021, and so I wanted to just provide a brief recap of the presentation we gave in July on how that assessment is being used to improve the stormwater system. Quick background on the annual stormwater assessment rate over time. Here we are today at the average annual assessment of $76.36, which was held flat this past year by the board due to COVID. The rates proposed in this public hearing would go back to following that five-year phase-in that the board adopted in 2019, and that results in an increase to the average annual assessment to $81.43 for calendar year 2021, which gets incorporated into our fiscal year 22 budget. And we also now have the Stormwater Hardship Exemption Program implemented this year. I had highlighted in the previous presentation that the increases over the last several years have allowed the county to make significant investments in the stormwater system, focused primarily on the goal of catching up on maintenance needs and restoring and preserving aging assets. So we see the focus here currently is on replacing aging and failed pipes over 150 and ramping up maintenance activities, increasing mowing from about 7,000 acres to over 10,000 acres, and increasing ditch cleaning up to over 500,000 linear feet this year through our additional maintenance contracts. And we showed some examples of recent ditch cleaning and restoration that helps to keep stormwater flowing and off the roadways. So building on these efforts to maintain, preserve, and improve the stormwater system, the projected FY22 revenue from this incremental increase, which is estimated to be about $2.4 million, would be planned to go towards neighborhood flood protection projects, helping to improve the drainage in some of our frequently flooded areas. Now, this table is one that you've seen before. This represents the planned five-year phased-in increases that the board approved in 2019. And at that time, the board adopted the rates in the first column on the left here, as well as the maximum rates in the far right column, along with the plan to phase those in over five years, as shown in the columns moving from left to right. The current rates remain at that initial level, as last year's increase was postponed. The next column to the right shows the planned rates for the 2021 tax year, which will fund our FY22 program. So again, as you can see, as we go back to implementing the phased-in schedule, this would result in the rate for a medium-sized home going from $76 to $81 annually. And the last thing to mention is the notices. Written notices were mailed out to property owners who will be receiving this assessment for the first time, or will have their assessment modified due to property modifications, and this public hearing was noticed in the Tampa Bay Times. Those notices state that property owners have the right to file written objections to the assessment increase, and to date, we have not received any written objections. So with that, I'll close and offer to answer any questions, and this is a public hearing.
Okay, this is a public hearing. We have no one signed up to speak, so we'll close the public hearing, and with that, I will recognize Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With this particular item, D2, we all know that we have approved several rate increases over the past, I think I've been a board member about nine months. We've approved several rate increases. However, we do have in the American Rescue Plans, the program, $285,912,528, and I'd like to see us give our constituents a financial break in that we use from the program of water, sewage, and broadband infrastructure that we fund this particular item of $2.4- item of $2.4 million. So therefore, I'd like to move that we use the rescue fund dollars to support item D2.
Second for discussion.
Motion by Commissioner Myers, second by Commissioner Cohen for discussion. I don't see any Commissioners.
Yeah. So I'd like to ask the county administrator if that is permissible and if that's feasible to do.
Stormwater is an item that is permitted under the American Rescue Plan. In fact, in the plan that we will be discussing, we have recommended various stormwater projects to be included in the plan. This could be used instead as well, but we, but stormwater is permitted.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
So we, we are, for example, using some American, well, we may be, if we approve this, one of the items on the agenda today, using American Rescue Plan dollars for things like road resurfacing. Although we, you know, we do have fees and, and tax dollars that can go for that as well, but the need is great. And so, you know, we can rob Peter to pay Paul by taking some of these American Rescue Plan dollars for stormwater improvements, but our need is pretty great there, too. We have a lot of people complaining that their drainage ditches need to be, you know, reworked to, to really work. Our roads are flooding. We have more and more rain events causing more flooding. And with the, with the more and more development in areas around low-lying wetlands, the parking lots, the roofs, the impervious surfaces are creating more, more and more flooding that need to be relieved by stormwater projects. I think it's, it's telling. And, and Commissioner Myers, I, I understand, I feel exactly what you're talking about, that we have had to raise fees and, and rates in several areas because they had not been raised for so long. It had been decades. And, and we were, this is why we have fallen behind in our infrastructure, because we had not, this county had not been raising, you know, raising the, the rates to pay for the critically needed infrastructure along the way, including fire and rescue stations, you know, as well as roads. But stormwater is, is a dire need. If, and let me ask the county administrator, I mean, when you say, yes, we could use some of this instead of raising rates, and, and, and let me, let me point out again that we had no complaints. We had zero written complaints from the citizens who all got these notices that their rates would be, would be raised. And because, you know, the rate is, is very small. It's, it's $5 a house. And, and the need is great. So I would like to ask our county administrator, I mean, you've got, we are so lucky to have a county administrator who has such a finger on the pulse of our budget, down to the little Do you feel like if we, if we put off the rate increase and used American Rescue funds, that, that that would be, you know, not, not catching us up as much as we need to catch up in stormwater? Or do you feel like we, we really need to, to do this rate increase as well as use the American Rescue Plan dollars we can for, for catching up?
There we go. We, we provide stormwater improvements, as you've mentioned, throughout the community. And it, we also use general fund dollars, not only our assessment. So we have about $20 million of general fund revenues that go toward the stormwater assessment program. We know that is not enough. You all have seen the presentations. It is why you adopted a five-year plan to increase these rates. And what you tried to do at that time was to do very moderate increases to get you to a place where we could make some improvements in the community. So my only concern about doing that is that it would be a bigger jump in next year, a little bit more. And, but once again, you know, we do have the monies. It is clearly permitted, and we did provide for some stormwater improvements in the plan. So there's, there's not enough money. We could use all of the money for stormwater. We can use all the money for resurfacing. We can use all the money for fire. There's, you know, yes, we have a $285 million, but it's going to, we think we have a plan that is going to be very impactful throughout the community. So we can do it, you know, certainly a number of ways. But the, as we know, the unincorporated area fund is the area that's very stressed. And that is why having this assessment is helpful to, for those stormwater improvements.
Thank you. And if I still have the floor, I, I'm just going to say, as we looked at that American Rescue Plan, spending plan, we, although it's 200 and something million, we don't have enough to cover everything that's listed out in there. We are going to have to choose, you know, from, from resurfacing roads to sewer projects to fire rescue stations as it is. And we won't be able to do everything we, we want to do there. So if we, if we can have a sensible rate of user fees paying for the stormwater in a, in a $5 a house increment with, that, that no citizens have objected to with all the noticing, I'm going to stick with that plan that we had already approved. We put it off a year because of COVID and, and, but now that we are beginning to come out of that, hopefully, I'm, I'm going to stick with that plan. Thank you.
I see no other comments, but I'll, I'll, I'll just say that, and I'll call on you in a second. Commissioner Cohen. I, I also will be sticking with this plan. It's very de minimis, a $5 increase over a year. And, and as Commissioner Smith recognized, we did put it off last year due to COVID, but we've, you know, seen our county budget, been able to deal with this. Our, our income from our tax receipts hasn't, you know, hasn't been something that we had impacted that way. But if we're using American Rescue dollars this way, and, and maybe this is a question for Ms. Wise, but, you know, we, we're not using, if we use American Rescue dollars to do this de minimis stormwater, which desperately needs to be raised and hasn't been, and is super, is very much below what other places are charging, we're not having money then to replace septic and well water, to do wastewater improvements, to do road improvements, to possibly make rent payments or housing assistance, or Wi-Fi, or fire stations, or other things. We're making a choice about doing this instead of those things with whatever amount of money we, we replace this with. Is that correct, Ms. Wise?
It's $2.5 million, so it would be $2.5 million off the total that would come from somewhere. And then just as a reminder, of course, and I think you should all be very proud of this, is that we instituted the hardship program this year, which certainly we want to make sure that the word gets out, that people have the ability to apply for that. So, because we do know that people are still hurting, and we do want to recognize that and give them the ability to apply for that so that they are not impacted by the increase.
Thank you. I, I just think it's really important, as I, I've been someone here who has looked mostly at developer impact fees that hadn't been increased for 30 years, but we have been not doing what we should have been doing responsibly to pay for just the general needs of the county. And this is a very, very de minimis move. And, and as I said, we put it off for a year. And I think wisely, last year, did the hardship program have a de minimis amount here. So I, I wouldn't be supporting using American Rescue dollars for this. But Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
So I think that everything that both Commissioner Smith and Commissioner Kemp said is correct. However, we have been very aggressive this year in making up for lost time. That is, that is what we have done at every step of the way. And not only with impact fees, but also recently with the solid waste charges. And I have been willing to, to step out and do it at every turn. The reason I think that this is something that, that we should do, that what Commissioner Myers is suggesting, is because it's de minimis, and because it is symbolic of the fact that we recognize that people are struggling. And I think that, that this is, this is one moment with a very small increase where we can cushion the impact of everything that we've done collectively over the past year, and do so without breaking the budget in, in any significant way. I, I agree that we have not gotten pushback on this, but we certainly did on some of the other things that we did. And each of these decisions was, was very difficult, and they all added up to significant amounts of money for the county. This is a very, very small amount of money, where we can simply make a gesture to our citizens saying, hey, we recognize it's a difficult time. We're doing the best we can to try to, to, to sort of flatten out these increases a little bit, so you don't get socked with everything at once. And, and quite honestly, if it were larger, I would be more concerned about doing it because I think that we all know that we are making up for lost time, and we are starting out from behind the eight ball. But I, I think we can, I think we can accommodate this. And I think that it shows that we're sensitive to the fact that, that there's a lot of people out there that are struggling. So I, I'm going to support doing it.
Okay. And I see no further comment here.
Madam, madam, madam Chair, it's Commissioner White. My hand's up.
Oh, I'm sorry. But you're recognized.
Okay. I just very briefly want to say that I agree with everything that Commissioner Cohen has just said, and I will be supporting Commissioner Myers' motion that's on the floor.
And I see no further comments. And again, I'd just like to say not a single member of the public, with all the notice, showed up here today to, to object to this. But with that, I see no further discussion. And if you could, we have a motion by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. If you could do a roll call vote?
Kemp?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
No.
Smith?
No.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried four to three. Commissioners Kemp, Overman, and Smith voted no.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Josh. I, I think because we're looking to change or to reduce the, the amounts from the way the resolution is written in the agenda item, that we'll need to read the amendment into the record and then have the board take action to adopt the resolution as amended and certify the tax rule. And the county attorney office can, can check me on that, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Yes, thank you, Josh. And Vivian Arenas Battles is on with us and can explain that change to the resolution for you.
Yes, this is Vivian Arenas Battles with the county attorney's office. Again, we would have to amend the resolution for the rates, and as I understand it, that would be to hold the rates that we had for 2020, and then that, and also to certify the rule to the tax collector as, as amended.
So would we do that right, right now?
Yes.
Okay. So can we have, do we have a resolution that's been prepared?
She, she will prepare it in accordance with those directions.
Josh Bellotti could read those rates into the record, though.
Okay. And I can go ahead and do that now. So that means that for calendar year 2021, the rates would, would be as follows. For small, single-family dwelling units, 100 to 1,500 square feet, building footprint, $42 per year. Medium, single-family dwelling unit, 1,501 to 3,200 square feet, building footprint, $76.36 per year. A large, single-family dwelling unit, 3,201 to 5,700 square feet, building footprint, $116.83 per year. Very large, single-family dwelling unit, greater than 5,700 square feet, building footprint would be $0.0179 per square foot of impervious area per year, with a minimum assessment of $116.83. For mobile home or recreational vehicle park, for the Department of Revenue, Land Use Code 28, $25.20 per year for each mobile home space, recreational vehicle space in the park, whether occupied by a mobile home, recreational vehicle, or not. And then lastly, for town home, townhouses, apartment complexes, condominiums, cooperatives, $25.20 per year for each dwelling unit on the parcel.
Also, just, also, the non-residential developed property would be $0.0179 for square feet of impervious area on the parcel per year, with a minimum assessment of $76.36 per parcel.
Thank you. So with that, I guess we have to have a motion to move this resolution?
It's, it would be to adopt the resolution as amended and certify the tax rule.
Okay.
Chair, I have a question, please.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, hold on. I just wanted to...
Commissioner White moves approval of the resolution as amended.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Commissioner White, and seconded by Commissioner Myers. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized, and I'll, I'll recognize you in a second. Commissioner Overman.
Thanks. I just have a question. So does this, did what we, does this keep the rate the same for the next year and then keep our plan, push our plan back for the $5 a year increase? Or, or would the plan then need a $10 increase the next year?
It, it keeps the rate the same. And when you do this process again next year as required, you'll have that ability to look at it and adjust. But if you were to stick to the plan, it would follow the increase that was included in the original 2019 plan.
I'm just concerned that this is just pushing off the rate increases to make a bigger increase the following year, or else, you know, have, have a, but I, I guess we're, we're talking about taking the American Rescue Plan dollars to plug into this year to make up for that. Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you. And, and my question is along those same lines. The resolution actually approves the rate for this year for the, for the tax assessment that'll actually go off shortly, correct? And we're, we're, we've already approved the five-year plan. So is part of this resolution approving the plan over the next five years? Or does it just address this year's rates for the purposes of the tax assessment that goes out this fall?
Commissioner, what we're approving in the resolution right now is the rates for the upcoming tax year, 2021, as well as the max rates, which is the same as the maximum rate. rate that was approved back in 2019. And that just allows you to phase in increases up to that maximum rate. How you choose to spread those out, I think the board can decide.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion at this time on the resolution, we have a motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Myers. And if we could have a roll call vote?
Kemp?
No.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman? Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried six to one. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
Thank you. And we will, Ms. Wise will move to the next item.
Thank you. Our next item is the 1015, Item G3. This is to receive a report on local pandemic-related data, recovery programs, and strategic investments related to COVID-19. There's a thorough report as your backup, as we'll have Tim Dudley, Emergency Management Division Director, and Dr. Holt give a brief presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This is Tim Dudley, Office of Emergency Management Director. I'll be providing an update on current operations. County testing, Hillsborough County and the City of Tampa, public testing sites have conducted nearly 40,000 tests at the four sites currently operating. The positivity rate for rapid tests at these sites are averaging 18%. Hillsborough County City of Tampa testing sites account for around 46% of the testing within the county. The wait for appointments at local pharmacies remain three to five days for wait for appointments. County vaccination update, demand continues to remain very low at the Lee Davis Vaccine Site. They've administered 53 vaccines at this particular site. We'll continue to monitor that site. The community pharmacies, providers, and other organizations with access to the vaccines are not experiencing any delays at this time, so there's plenty of opportunity out in the community to receive vaccines. OEM has currently conducted site visits of multiple indoor locations throughout the county to determine the possibility of serving as vaccination sites to support future third-dose operations. We are reviewing lists of previous targeted vaccination sites along with the Department of Health to project future mobile missions to those locations as requested by 55-plus communities, churches, and those most at risk to start out with. Some private providers are currently administering third doses to immunocompromised individuals. Kings Forest Park Antibody Therapy Site, this site is seeing around 200 people per day with a capacity of 320 daily. The site has administered 1,121 antibody treatments thus far. Appointments are not required but are highly recommended. TVA missions, the Department of Health conducted 16 TVA events during the past week. 23 events are scheduled within the next 30 days by the Department of Health team and their 16 others scheduled with state resources. Demand for vaccines at these events continue to be low. The Department of Health is also working with the school district to plan for future vaccination events. There are also multiple vaccination events scheduled at children's board centers throughout the county, starting today, 1 September, 8 September, 9 September, and 15 September. And the public can visit the Stay Safe, the County Stay Safe website or the Hillsborough County Department of Health website to see the locations and dates for these events. This concludes my update. And then any questions?
Thank you. I don't see any questions at this time. And Dr. Holt?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Commissioners, this is Dr. Doug Holt, Florida Department of Health, Hillsborough County. I'd ask that my presentation be pulled up, please. Thank you. I will present the EpiData. I'm going to focus on some healthcare systems in particular. So first slide, please. Recall, we've seen this slide quite a bit. The yellow line is the percent positivity over time, and the red line is cases. The top line tracks our entire period of our pandemic, and the bottom focuses really on the last 30 days. As you can see, the percent positivity is showing, really since mid-August, showing some slight downward trend. We've come down from 20% to 17.5. The number of cases per day remaining relatively flat but are not increasing. But the numbers of 1,600 cases a day are extraordinarily high. So our community-based transmission, the amount of virus spreading in Hillsborough County is very, very high. So the risk of infectivity is anywhere and anytime. Number two slide, please. And this shows basically that we are similar to the rest of the state, a little, actually a little above the state, which is the gray dotted line. Now, this is, Hillsborough's the red. We in Pasco are highest in this region. Next slide, please. Let me just begin before I say this. You know, the cause of this surge is Delta. 98% of the virus that we are sequencing in Hillsborough County last week are Delta. Delta is 10 times more infectious than the original strain we dealt with earlier. The vaccine, which previously prevented people who were vaccinated and did become infectious or become infected from being not infectious, with Delta, they become contagious. This is contrary to what I told this board in May or June, I believe. And again, facts have changed. We've relaxed mitigation, fatigue, and some of that early overconfidence around July 4th, when we did thought the vaccine would prevent contagiousness. We're also seeing relatively low vaccine rates, which I'll talk about. We have about 60% of our population sort of either not vaccinated, about 50% not vaccinated or not eligible. The risk of the vaccine works, it has, it is safe, and any risk of problems have been calculated at five in a million doses. If you are vaccinated, you have 10 times less likely to become infected, 25 times less likely to be hospitalized. As you'll see, 80% of the hospitalized patients are unvaccinated. The percent of deaths since June are 90% unvaccinated. Essentially, we're in a study. We have 50% of our population vaccinated, 50% unvaccinated. Everyone has got the same exposure. But again, 80% are hospitalized or vaccinated. This slide focuses on children. Again, overall, rates for all ages have decreased. The younger populations, 0 to 24, are the highest. If you look at the next 10 intervals, age intervals, 35 to 44 and 25 to 34 are higher. Fortunately, our 65 and older are lower at 60 per 100,000. But that remains about 10 times what we saw in July. Next slide, please. Now, I'm going to focus on the hospitals. This is information that hospitals have provided for me to share. I'd like to begin by, again, acknowledging the leadership of our CEOs at our four hospital systems. They've worked together to respond to COVID since the beginning. Special recognition of four COOs with the systems that have worked with Hillsborough County and Florida Department of Staff, Robin McGuinness at Advent Health, Dr. Nishant Anan at BayCare, Dr. Sebastian Strom at HCA, and Kelly Cullen at Temple General. The census in all the combined hospitals has stabilized, but represents 32.4% of all of their inpatients. What they're seeing is still a large number of daily new admissions, but fortunately, they've been able to offset that by a comparable number of discharges. Those that do remain hospitalized or requiring high level of care, prolonged ICU, there's about 250 patients in the ICU. Again, this population is noticeably younger. And again, I'll emphasize, they report 85% to 90% are unvaccinated. Those that are vaccinated are older, immunocompromised. These do not represent vaccine failures. Most of these were vaccinated early, and some don't develop such a strong immunity. As we know, losers will be recommended. This COVID surge is happening during one of their busier times. Normally, this is not their busiest time, but it is busier than normal for non-COVID. And despite the fact that we are really blessed with hospital resources capable of providing the best and highest level of care, we're still seeing, actually even seeing transfers from across the state. It is still combined to cause extraordinarily demands, demands I've never seen in 30 years. Staffing is their number-one challenge, both how many and exhaustion. The emergency rooms are clogged. There's been some delays in transfers of patients from ambulances. This has stressed the system, but I want to emphasize the hospitals working very closely with county staff and Florida Department of Health for, really over the last 18, but particularly the two months, are making headway to improve this. Oxygen supplies are low, but stable and adequate. The reserve is a challenge, and that's what they're monitoring closely. Ventilation and equipment are adequate. The biggest challenge of hospitals with ventilation or high flow of oxygen is that not all of their areas in the hospital are equipped to do that. So they're challenged by finding the right places to do that. Monoclonal antibody is helping. We're giving almost 250 doses a day, most recently at the fairgrounds, and there's others in the private sector. So they and I would encourage anyone who's recently infected to get this treatment. It does reduce your chance of being hospitalized. And finally, sadly, that even with our most advanced care, the number of deaths are straining their onsite storage of bodies. But the main causes is much of the funeral homes are stressed trying to deal with both those dying and/or dying both in hospitals and homes. So they emphasized again, final message. Fifth slide, next slide, please. As you can see, as you can see, about 53% of our total population have at least one dose. About 43% of those are fully vaccinated. About 700,000 remain unvaccinated, with about a third or 200,000, less than 12,000 that are not eligible. Unfortunately, we have seen for the past four weeks a continued decrease in the number of first doses. And finally, last slide. This provides the detail of vaccinations by age. Again, not surprising, the percentage of age groups, the percentage of people in each age groups that are vaccinated decreases with age. Commissioners, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Difficult news after all this time to keep seeing these numbers just be the highest numbers that we've ever had by a long shot in the state of Florida. It just seems as though, you know, I know we can't say enough, but to hear you say the hospitals are clogged, you could see the emergency rooms have, like, it looked like on the charts, four or five times the number of people coming to the emergency rooms that were accepted into the hospital. 250 people a day here in the county, I guess, with monoclonal, getting monoclonal treatment. As you said, the funeral homes can't handle the surge, so it's painful to say, of bodies in Hillsborough County that are coming there. Our hospitals, as I understand, have twice what they ever had in the past. And we're just surging away with COVID, not seeing the relief that we hoped for here. So we can't say enough to go in and get your vaccine. I will say to the county, I'm just very pleased because I not only was notified by a constituent, but I'll just say that I used our county testing services myself and went through. And from the minute that I, first of all, it was very difficult to get the private services, pharmacies, and whatever, and to get any guarantee of when you would get your results. But I went to the county services, walked in from the minute I was there, walked through the front door till I left, was probably about 10 minutes, and got a report back within an hour that was, you know, it's unprecedented through any other service. So I just, I'm very, very proud of the services and that we are offering here at the county. It's kind of amazing in terms of testing. But again, you know, and I was notified by constituents who also had tried to get private services and were unsuccessful, went to the county services, and were extremely pleased, although they got the positive report. Not a good thing. But we are stressed, we are strained. And unfortunately, as the widow of a St. Petersburg police officer at his funeral yesterday urged, she said, you know, if only her husband had gotten the vaccine, he'd be with us now and set that up, as so many people have a vaccination tent at his funeral. And we just, I guess, have to keep going through this until we're not. But the vaccine, Dr. Holt, just, I know that, but the vaccine is our very best protection against getting this. You've repeated over and over again, 85% to 90% of the people that end up in the hospital are unvaccinated, correct?
That is correct. That's the hospital providing us that data. Yes, ma'am.
And our masks, if we can't get vaccinated, children under 12, immunocompromised, our mask is our next best defense? Is that correct? I mean, we've just heard so much misinformation today. Not by you, but earlier in the morning.
Well, beyond that, it really is, it's situational awareness, being where you are, who you're around, what are your situation. Masks will help in some of those situations. If you're trying to prevent from getting infected, you need a very high-quality mask. And if you're trying to both limit or reduce your risk but also help others, that's where the facial coverings and non-N95s do reduce the amount of virus that are expelled into the air.
Thank you. And just, I don't, but I saw a editorial, which many of you may have seen, or information, each shot, the government provides each vaccine two, $20 apiece. The monoclonal treatment is $1,000 for two. If you end up in the hospital, it's an average of $100,000. And that's not to mention the risk to your health, both long term and short term, and the infections that you can give to others that you love and care about. With that, I'll recognize Commissioner Overman.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. And thank you, Dr. Holt, and Mr. Dudley, for your reports. It became readily obvious that the spike that we saw between August 18th and 28th of our five-to-10-year-olds, that children are actually testing positive, and that's causing a great deal of disruption in our schools that don't have e-learning as an alternative when classrooms are sent home. My grandson actually got a phone call on Monday that he was not to be in class because his entire elementary school was being quarantined. So it is an issue, and taking protective measures is helpful. Thank you very much for working with us on establishing some vaccination sites through the children's board locations through the month of September. That information is available on our website. So parents of children in elementary school have an opportunity... So parents of children in elementary school have an opportunity to not only vaccinate their children over the age of 12, but also to get vaccinated themselves in order to reduce the impact of exposure while these children are actually in school. My question relates to, you know, we can mask, we can vaccinate, we can use the antibodies in order to help those that have been subsequently infected with COVID. But I'd like to get a read or at least some information on how soon the approval of vaccinations for five and up that I know is in trials. But has there been any progress on that? And do we have a rough range or estimate of when that might be possible? It's critically important that we get as many people vaccinated as possible. And, you know, child caring parents obviously are our first line of defense, but getting the rest of our children that are showing the highest levels of exposures right now is our next line of defense. So I'm curious about where we are with that. Dr. Holt, do you have any information on where that stands and what they estimate in the way of timeline for those that are five and up? I thought that was the next tranche of approvals or at least emergency authorization approvals.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to share, I was part of a medical society conference call on Monday, and other experts were there and had much closer sense of that. So this is the best they know. The FDA is, surprising to them, asked for more children to be enrolled to, I think, double down and ensure safety. So that's pushing it a little towards the end of this year rather than sooner. That's a prediction, but that's coming from the people who are much closer to in the know than I am.
Thank you very much for that response. Unfortunately, I'm not happy to hear that at all, but I do understand. So given how we addressed mitigation experience, you know, of exposure of children in the past, e-learning was an option last year when we found it was necessary to try and protect children, even though it didn't seem as though they were adversely affected. E-learning currently is not available in Hillsborough County, and I don't believe it's really available anywhere else. Would you see that as a best option for being able to reduce exposures of a highly aerosol virus in school or classroom settings as an alternative to having children maybe not even show, you know, be able to report back for five or six days that they tested positive in that interim? Many, many children have gotten exposed.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to just say that we've been working with Superintendent Davis and his team and the board throughout the, from the beginning, and they've done an amazing job in doing their best to reduce risk while in school. With this community-based transmission, they can't fully protect their, both their staff and their residents, but they're doing everything they can. Like all of us, and we talked about this early, contact tracing at this stage of this mount is really impossible to have the effectiveness that it was designed to do. So as it relates to proceeding under the best we can on this situation, we are engaged them in a planning process of what we can do over the next 30 days while they have implemented the mask. And I do not know, and I can't comment really on the substance really of your question. I'm there to give them everything we can to help them make that decision.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I realize that we don't have any control over what the school board does or what the school administration does, but to encourage parents to get vaccinated if they have school-aged children and they're not vaccinated is critically important for this success of not only our children's health, but also their education. So thank you very much for all your work. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you very much. You know, what's so difficult about this for so many people is that I think at one point there was an expectation that it would end, and it not only doesn't seem to end, but it just seems to be dawning on a lot of us that this is something almost chronic that we're going to have to continue to live with. And I know you don't have a crystal ball, Dr. Holt, but I'm looking at the numbers and I'm looking on pages six and seven of your report, and the numbers vary a little bit between the two pages. So I'm gonna just stick to the pie chart for a second. We have 53% of our population, and it's obviously it's our adult population that's vaccinated. There's 32% of the above 12 population that's unvaccinated, but we know that a lot of those people have already had the disease and have developed antibodies. My question for you is, do you have a mathematical or formulaic ability to project when the numbers should start to come down due to the type of herd immunity that would be created by just simply the number of vaccinated people and the number of people who have already had it?
Yes, sir. I do not have that. I have access to what's published. We have a local expert at USF, the hospitals use several other sources for that, what modeling is what you're referring to. And they try to factor in recent infections and how long is that immunity last? Some of our best data right now is that natural immunity isn't as prolonged as the vaccine, and we already know the vaccine for Delta. Delta's has really changed what we're challenged by. You know, mail only lasts six months to eight months in average. Understand, we're talking about people, and people react differently to the vaccines. So some are going to have immunity that may go a year or more, others less. So bottom line to your answer to your question, there are multiple models out there. Most predict that our surge, following some of the examples in Europe that have had Delta before, we're hoping to see a relatively rapid decline. But that's a prediction, and so I think sadly, I've learned that my predictions are more wrong with COVID than.
No, I understand that, and I understand that we're asking you to wade into territory that might be a bit beyond your comfort level. But I do think it's important to try to get our arms around what our expectations should be over the next four, six, eight weeks. And so you're saying that you expect, based on some of the modeling, to see a rapid decline at some point. Do you have any sense of when people could reasonably expect that, understanding there's no crystal ball? Is there any uniformity to the modeling that would say that, you know, by Thanksgiving, you would expect a lull by Halloween? I mean, I think that it's important to try to ferret out some information so that people have a sense of how long they can expect this phase of things to continue.
Yes, I know what you're asking. It's a, I feel like we're in that early hurricane projection, and the lines are pretty broad if you really focus, if you look at where we are now. Some of the positive factors that were reported, and we have county supports at Paul, where we discussed it, the factors that I heard, you know, is that despite what we hear, there is more masking and more social, more mitigation than there had been. So we're seeing positive trends. We'd like to see more vaccinations. That's the longest, that's will have the longest sustained reduction and to get things down, not only quickly, it really won't be quickly, but sustaining. And I think that's the frustrating part of this is the ups and downs. So I'm really not trying to avoid your answer, I just don't have that answer.
And my final, and I appreciate that, and we all do. I know it's difficult to be placed on the spot to predict. The hospitals, the situation in the hospitals, based on the surges that we saw last year and what you've observed of our hospital capacity, the fact that so many hospitals are going on bypass during the course of the day when they simply can't handle any more patients coming in, you seeing any signs that that might be abating at all anytime soon?
Yes, sir. In fact, and again, the difference between what we had before was many of the hospitals had decompressed. They weren't doing, they, people weren't coming to the hospital if they were sick. Now things are back to normal. We were having weekly calls with the hospitals since early July, and we felt based on the last one that we could skip a week unless there's something changes. So they very do, they very much feel that they have stabilized. And, you know, so despite the numbers, you know, they're a little more comfortable than they were a few weeks ago. And I think that's the tone, the data, they live it every day, but that's the message I came with away. They're still completely functional, they're meeting all the needs, it's just they're very stressed and, you know, they're hoping things will continue to get better.
Well, we're very grateful to everything that everyone that works in our hospitals is doing to get us through this. And I know all of us hope that the stresses that all of those people are under will abate as soon as possible. And I appreciate your answering what I know are difficult, we all know are difficult questions for the community. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just, I have one more question, and that's just, Dr. Holt, we're not getting, as I understand, the numbers for the number of deaths, new deaths in Hillsborough County, actually statewide, but that we can't, we don't have access to those numbers any longer?
The data that comes out publicly available is, does not include that, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that, I guess we're just going to have to see where we are in the next couple weeks and hope that more and more people, and I guess the one hopeful thing, and I guess I'll check on this again, I asked this question last time, we are at least seeing some surge or increased number of people coming to get vaccinations. Is that correct, vaccines?
Actually, the data does not support that. We've decreased over the last few weeks, if you look at the first doses. And even despite, I think, our stepping up, the decreases are not large, but they're not going in the right direction.
Okay. I'll stop asking any more questions at this point. Thank you very much. And with that, we will move to the next item, Ms. Wise.
Thank you. And I did want to thank Dr. Holt and our hospital partners because we stay very close in contact with them. We want to help them as far as with the emergency management situation, the ambulances. We have contracted with a hotel for the hospitals so that they could get some of the patients out who need some assistance. So I, we are fortunate here in Hillsborough County that we have excellent healthcare, and we will continue that relationship. And big thanks to Tim Dudley and his staff because they are ninjas and do whatever is necessary to get us through this. So.
And on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I'll reiterate that we are very pleased and thank everyone for their, I mean, it's just been an incredible, genuine community effort by our first responders, by our medical community, in fact, begging, begging people to get the vaccine and let's bring these numbers down and help our community to move forward. But thank you to everyone.
Thank you. Our next item is item B1. This is our 1045. This is to approve a resolution, a memorandum of understanding relating to the opioid litigation. And Christine Veth will present this item and our special counsel, Mike Moore.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and Board members. Back in 2017, the county attorney's office did a formal competitive procurement to select outside counsel to assist us in pursuing remedies related to the opioid epidemic. And at that time, we recommended a team led by Mr. Mike Moore and several other outstanding attorneys to the board, and the board made that selection in 2017. In 2018, the, our outside counsel filed several, a lawsuit against several defendants. And today, we are happy to be able to bring the results of four years of hard work to the board with a recommendation to approve a resolution and a memorandum of understanding, which is the initial steps of a complex settlement process. So with that, I will turn this over to Mr. Mike Moore, who is leading our outstanding outside counsel team. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll try to make this as brief as possible, and I would say I enjoyed the last hour of listening to all the complicated matters that you guys have to handle. It's a tough job. Good news today is that after quite a while litigation, we have a settlement with three of the distributors who distribute the drugs. These are basically the folks who move drugs from point A to point B. They are Cardinal Health, AmerisourceBergen, and McKesson. And we also have a settlement with Johnson &amp; Johnson, as many of you will recognize that name. They manufacture pills. They weren't the biggest culprit, but they're one of the biggest culprits. Johnson &amp; Johnson has agreed to pay $5 billion over a period of time. The distributors have agreed to pay $21 billion over a period of time. This is the national numbers. When it gets to Florida, you guys get seven, a little over 7% of those proceeds, which is about $1.6 billion. When it gets to Hillsborough County share, it's probably going to be somewhere between 50 and 60 million, maybe as much as 65 million dollars paid over time. Those monies will again be paid to Hillsborough County in April of next year is our prediction. They'll start with payments around five and a half, maybe 5.8 million, probably go down in later years to three or four million dollars. But you have to use those monies for abatement. The good news for your county is that Hillsborough County has been a model across the country in dealing with the opioid epidemic. You already have an opioid task force. Your folks are already beginning discussions with Tampa and the other plant city and temple terrorists about how to work together to solve the problems within your county. Your county prosecutor, your sheriff, your chief of police, your medical examiner, your fire and rescue folks, Gene Early, your university, all the folks that we work with, including your outstanding county attorneys, Christine and Rob have been a model. And I say that with no hesitation. They've been the best we've worked with anywhere in this country on this issue, and you should be set up to handle this settlement. It's a bit dependent on how many states sign up for it, but at this point, 45 out of the 50 states have signed up. There are 3,800 cases in cities and counties across the country, and the majority of them will also sign up. As we've told many of you, we want to encourage all the cities and counties in Florida to sign up to this settlement and approve this MOU because the more that do, the more money flows to Hillsborough County and the state of Florida. So unless you have any real questions, that's the good news. I might also tell you that there are two other settlements. Purdue Pharma has resolved their case, as well as Mallinckrodt. Both of those companies are in bankruptcy, but we do expect money to flow from both of those companies, probably another $5 billion from Purdue and maybe another billion and a half from Mallinckrodt out of the bankruptcy, which will add to the amount of money that Hillsborough County gets each year during the next years. And we expect further settlements as we move forward, but we've got a long way to go, but this is a great start, and we are honored to... this is a great start, and we are honored to represent the county. And frankly, we don't have a better group to represent anywhere else in this country. You guys have been the easiest and the best to work with, so we're proud of that. And if anybody's got any questions, we'll be glad to answer them, but I think people have been pretty well briefed on this.
Thank you. Did you have any comments to add, Ms. Beck?
No, no, Madam Chair.
Okay. And thank you, Mr. Moore. I will first move to Commissioner Overman. You're recognized.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mr. Moore, for your report. It's good to hear that we'll have resources for those that have been impacted by opioid addiction and the fallout that occurs in our communities as a consequence of that. When you use the term abatement, what does that mean? Can you define that for me, please?
Sure. Opioid abatement means that we need to spend the money moving forward to try to impact the, to those people who are affected by the opioid epidemic, so people who have opioid use disorder, try to prevent opioid deaths, try to do prevention and education, to attempt to try to keep people from ever starting, you know, the path toward using drugs, whether it's opioids or other drugs. There's about a 20-pager within the settlement agreement that lists everything that everybody's found that works across the country, from the use of medically assisted treatment, you know, the buprenorphine that prevents people from using drugs, to the use of Narcan, which you use down there to try to prevent overdoses, and other things. So this will supplement what you guys are already doing. You're already a model. You know, you have a tax there that helps provide some treatment for people there, and you're doing so many other things. Gene Early and his group have been outstanding to work with. So anything that will abate the nuisance, abate the problem going forward, you can use this money on.
Thank you very much for that, because I know, being a member of the Public Safety Coordinating Council, many of the recidivism through our jail have to do with mental health as well as drug addiction and all the issues associated with that. And there's been recommendations on things that we would need to consider and look for tools, especially given the inequities associated with the impact in our communities. So the work that we're doing now with our equity profile, as well as the efforts of the Public Safety Coordinating Council and all the members on that, I'm sure will come together with a great plan to address this, these resources being reinvested in our community and our families. So thank you very much for the work that you've done. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I just want to express that I think we've been very, very fortunate to secure this law firm and be able to work with the Mike Moore Law Firm, who is, you know, expert and renowned in exactly this kind of litigation. And we can also be very proud that such a prestigious law firm has informed us in our briefings about, and here again today, about how Hillsborough County has set the bar in our data and justification and our legal, our county attorneys and our legal team in working with this, but also our sheriff, our coroner, our medical examiners, our fire department, and everyone mentions Gene Early and the healthcare services department in the partnership that is bringing us to this place where we can make these bad actors pay in ways that will make such a difference and do so much good in our county for addressing the opioid addiction menace that these companies have profited from and pushed. And I also just want to highlight that the results are not only monetary, that we will get to do good work with, but the results of this work and all the work that our county departments and our county attorneys have done with our outside counsel is resulting in real change in the way that people will no longer be victimized in so many of the ways that they have been so shamelessly and so horribly. So the practices for pushing and profiting and ignoring the red flags by these unscrupulous practitioners are now changed and will be changed. And so I, I'm just, I'm just very proud of all the work, and I thank our county attorney's office, as well as our outside counsel and the other departments that I mentioned, and I'm happy to move the item.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cohen, and did I hear Commissioner Overman, I think? And with that, I just, I, well put, Commissioner Smith, this has been a tragedy of immense proportions, really ravaged Hillsborough County, as well as other communities across the country in a way that is just unconscionable, and one, I think, that just wasn't quite expected by the big pharmacy companies, that, you know, it's not where people expected this drug pushing and dangerous addictions to come from. And so, and again, Mr. Moore, thank you for really guiding the nation through, I think, a really strong settlement that will help us at least start to look and address the problem and tragedy out there, at best put a stop to what's going on now, and then, and then look at what we can do. So thank you very, we're very fortunate, I believe, to have you, as well as communities across the country, and thank you for your recognition of Hillsborough County. That makes us very proud. And Ms. Beck, you're recognized.
I only wanted to add very briefly that I also wanted to acknowledge the work and efforts put in by Chief Assistant County Attorney Robert Brazel, who was working closely with our outside counsel during this process as well. So thanks to Rob as well.
Great. Thank you. And with that, and seeing no further comments, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, with a second by Commissioners Cohen and Overman. And if we can please have a roll call vote.
Kent?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And with that, we will move to our next item, Ms. Wise.
Our next time-certain item is item G2. This was Commissioner Hagan asked us to bring back a report regarding customers of Olympus Pools. Adam Gormley is here for that item.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Adam Gormley with Development Services Department. Item G2 is a report on Olympus Pools, and this is in response to the board's request and Commissioner Hagan's request to identify measures that can be taken to help the customers of Olympus Pools and review the actions that other counties may be taking. Olympus Pools is a, at the moment, a state-licensed pool and spa contractor. By having a state license, they're permitted to do work throughout the state of Florida. In the course of their work, Olympus Pools had generated a number of complaints that were filed with the State Department of Business and Professional Regulation, and those complaints were investigated. And as a result of those complaints and investigation, Olympus Pools and the State Department of Business and Professional Regulation have entered into a stipulated settlement agreement, which is intended to resolve those cases. The resolution would yield Olympus Pools voluntarily giving up their two pool spa contractors' licenses and agree to, for the licensed individuals, name is James Staten, doing business as Olympus Pools, to never again apply for another professional license, and the agreement provides for fines to be levied in the event that such application did occur. That agreement is currently scheduled to be considered by the State Construction Industry Licensing Board on September 9th. If accepted, the settlement agreement will become effective. We anticipate fully that the state board will accept that. As a result of this, there are a number of property owners, homeowners, who have current permits with Olympus Pools for work to be done that will not be able to be completed by Olympus Pools. In fact, Olympus Pools has stopped doing work currently, and part of their agreement was that they would cease all construction activities related to their license in advance of the Construction Industry Licensing Board consideration of the settlement agreement. What we have done is we have recognized that there are a number of homeowners who are going to need, property owners who will need assistance with transferring those permits to complete the work to either a owner permit or to another contractor. We have, in response to that, established a page on our website that provides direction and instruction on how to go about making that permit transfer. We did also survey several other surrounding jurisdictions and found that Pasco County has implemented a waiver of the permit transfer fee for permit transfers, and Polk County has indicated that they would waive that fee if requested. We did also survey Tampa, Pinellas County, Hernando County, and Manatee County, and of those who responded, they didn't indicate that they were doing anything particular in response to Olympus Pools. What we would recommend is, in addition to the educational information that we've provided that the board consider authorizing us to bring a resolution back to waive the permit transfer fee for any customers of Olympus Pools. This would be based on the hardship that they're incurring by having the contractor relinquish their license mid-job. If the board is inclined to do that, we'll bring that back in a form of a resolution, which is how our building fees are currently adopted. We also do have some assistance that can be provided through Consumer Affairs or Consumer Protection, if there's some desire to have assistance in pursuing civil claims against Olympus Pools. That's the report on Olympus Pools and available for any questions the board may have or direction.
Thank you. Commissioner Hagan, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Adam, I appreciate the report. Board members, if you remember, a little while back, I asked staff to see how we might be able to assist those that have fallen victim to the disreputable practices of Olympus Pools. After hearing from many residents, I asked staff to see what surrounding counties are doing. It appears one thing that we can do is that we have the ability to waive the permit transfer fees, as Adam said, that would, I guess, be authorized through a resolution, and I'm going to make a motion to bring something back. But Adam, one question, is there anything else that we can do to help these folks in addition to waiving the permit transfer fees?
Commissioner, there are some of the other things that we have been doing proactively is working with property owners and potential new contractors to facilitate the permit and transfer process. When we have these permits being transferred, we are going out in the field with the homeowner and new contractor to review the status of the job and ensure that the transition to a new contractor is a smooth one. We also do have some measures that we fund two sheriff's office deputies who are, whose functions are reviewing unlicensed contracting incidences, as well as fraud incidents. So in the event that we do have any type of fraud identified, we do have an avenue to refer them for criminal, pursue criminal remedies.
Okay. That's certainly good. Now, I know that you referenced that Olympus Pools are going to be surrendering their contractor's license, so they won't be applying for any more permits. But what about any other contractors that potentially are bad actors? Are there any provisions by which we can suspend or revoke permitting privileges in order to try and avoid this? Is that something that we have the ability to do by changing our regulations, or is this better addressed at the state level?
So Commissioner, for the state-certified contractors, which we currently have a system of state-certified and state-registered that are local licenses, those will all be moving to be state-licensed in the near future, based on the change in state law. However, relative to the state-certified contractors who are issued the license by the state, we do have the ability to suspend or revoke their permitting privileges in Hillsborough County through a public hearing before our, one of our construction boards of appeals and adjustment examiners. Those, in order to revoke the permitting, suspend or revoke the permitting privileges, the board would have to have found that there was fraud or a willful building code violation. That's the latitude that state law offers us currently to affect the permitting privileges for state-certified contractors. The standard that's in there of a willful building code violation does raise the bar a bit for us in that the standard that we would have to show is something that was beyond something like mere negligence. So for us to have greater latitude to affect those state-certified contractors, there would need to be a change in that state law. That's contained in Section 49, Point 113 of Florida statutes.
So in order to have more latitude, or I guess more discretion, would require some type of legislative action, is that, and I don't know if that's a question for you or for Christine, but is that something that we should consider as far as potentially adding that to our legislative agenda?
Commissioner, if it was, if that standard was loosened, I'm sorry, if it was, if the items were broadened for which we could take action, things like something less than a willful building code violation, or something like letting a permit expire on a job, which right now is not really clear that that would be a willful building code violation, that would give us greater latitude in pursuing our own cases against state-certified contractors, which in the near future will be most contractors. We currently are issuing local contractor licenses, but as of July 1, 2023, we will no longer have that ability. So it may be something that's worthwhile to look at, given that we will be in the future dealing with more state-certified than locally licensed contractors.
Thank you very much. I'm going to make two motions. One, that if we can have staff draft a resolution which will waive the permit transfer fees for those affected for those affected by the Olympus Pool Company. That's the first motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan.
Second.
I heard a second online, I guess, as well as in here. Who seconded online?
I did, and I have a question following the.
Okay. So we have a second by Commissioner Overman and Commissioner Myers. And Commissioner Overman, you're recognized.
Thank you, and I'll make this quick. I have just a couple of questions for Mr. Gormley. Do you have estimate of the number of transfers that would occur and what we normally charge for the transfer fee?
The normal charge is for a pool permit is a little bit under $40. It's 10% of the permit fee plus two state surcharges that were required to add. And we had, at the time of the report, we had approximately 240 open active permits under Olympus, so that would be about the number of ones that we would expect, most if not all those, to be transferred either to a new contractor or to a homeowner permit. And we have had a few of those, but the transfer fee would still apply.
Okay. And in light of that, I would suggest that this is a good deal for the citizens, to tell you the truth, because based on what you've said, you were going to have to do for each of these transfers, the manpower it will take to make the transfer work well for the citizen. It sounds like it would be a very reasonable cost for us to take, but also real benefits to citizens that are in this difficult situation. So I would, that's part of the reason why I wanted to offer support for this motion. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay. And seeing no further comments or questions, at this time, we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioners Overman and Myers. And can we please do a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And Commissioner Hagan, you have a second?
Yeah, what I think, I'm not, as of today, one of her, I'm not ready yet to say we should add this to our legislative agenda, but I think that's something that we should at least consider. So that will give us more flexibility and latitude. So I'm just going to ask staff if they could come back with some suggested language or options on what we should, or how we could potentially add this to our legislative agenda. Again, not ready to do it today, but I think it's something we should take a look at and get more information from staff and then have more of a thorough discussion on that. So that's my motion.
Okay. Does that require a motion?
I think what you're asking is for staff to look at it and then come back to the board as appropriate.
Just come back to the board with some options.
So yeah, it would be appropriate. It'd be appropriate to have the board direct staff.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Cohen.
And if staff doesn't think we should do it, you can say that too. But I just think that we need, this is something that's worthy of us taking a harder look at and potentially pursuing. That's all I'm saying.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioner Cohen. Seeing no further comments, can we please do a roll call vote?
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we'll move to the next item. Ms. Wise?
Thank you. And we can move to the regular agenda. Our first item is Item B2. This is relating to the American Rescue Plan and outlining a framework for how we could invest the funds for the American Rescue Plan. Tom is going to go through a presentation. Actually, some of the information that he's going to pull from is in the COVID report because we report to you on a lot of this already. And just not to steal Tom's thunder, but just to take you all back, we had received $256 million of CARES dollars, and we were able to get those monies out into the community in a timely fashion. We were able to help people, 94 million for small businesses, 35 million for rental assistance and utility assistance, 6 million for food relief. We helped daycare facilities. We helped nonprofits. We did improvements to help our employees and to keep the public safe, facility improvements, public health support, of course, PPE, hoteling, hospital, working with our hospital partners. And we also shared some of those dollars with our municipal partners. Because as you recall, in the CARES, we received all the money. The cities did not get their own allocation, unlike the American Rescue Plan, where the cities will be getting their own allocation. So we're very proud of the work that we have done, and we have made big impacts in the community. And I want to thank the board and for our staff who all worked so tirelessly to get that information out to the community, the programs out to the community, and help really make a difference in the lives of our citizens. Many of those programs are ongoing because we have various monies. So for example, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program is ongoing. We have received other monies that are prepared in your report. And so, but now we have the American Rescue Plan dollars. And although the Treasury has not provided the final guidance, we don't expect much to differ from what they have provided already. So we have a plan for you today. It is a framework, and it is going to require us to come back to you fair amount as we have the details and any contracts that we have to present to you. But this gives us an opportunity to begin. The deadlines are generally December of 2024, with some exceptions. So for various capital projects especially, we need to get moving and we need to get planning. So with that, this plan gives us the ability to address various parts of our community, especially focusing on this public health crisis, especially those who are most vulnerable, the negative economic impacts of the crisis, and invest in our employees and our government services that we provide, whether it's fire rescue, emergency management, transportation, stormwater, and water quality, and the dressing broadband and the digital divide. So I appreciate the board's guidance. You have provided us input in our various budget workshops and individually, and our staff who helped us create this report. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom Fessler. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Fessler, Chief Financial Administrator. This morning, Item B2 first is asking you to approve the Hillsborough County American Rescue Plan Investment Plan for use of $285.9 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds to be received by the county. The second part of the item, Item B, is asking you to request or approve a fiscal year 21 budget amendment to appropriate $10 million in ARP funds. On May 19, 2021, the county received $142,956,264, which represented 50% of our allocation of the ARP funds awarded to the county. To date, none of those funds have been budgeted. So the budget amendment here today would be the first appropriation of those funds, and it will allow us to recover some of the staff efforts related to the pandemic. And with that, I just have a very short presentation I'd like to run through. Just to give an overview of the plan, the president signed the American Rescue Act, American Rescue Plan Act back in March for $1.9 trillion. There were, of that amount, $362 billion, which is state and local governments, and the county share of those dollars is approximately $286 million. And as I just said, we have received the first payment, which is half of that, with the second payment to be received within fiscal year '22. As Bonnie had mentioned earlier, we basically have until the end of December of 2024, with some exceptions, to extend the funds. You can see that the total proceeds from the Act, again, $362 billion to state and local governments for things such as public health response, equity-focused services, that is a big part of the plan, is to focus those services towards those individuals that are potentially underserved or vulnerable populations. It allows us to address negative economic impacts. It provides for some opportunities for some, either premium pay or to recover some dollars for the efforts of staff. There's a revenue replacement component to it. So this is where you have a little bit more flexibility in use of the funds, and there are certain calculations that we go through on an annual basis to determine how many of, how much, how many of the funds are available to be used in this category. And finally, it allows us to provide for some infrastructure improvements for water, stormwater, sewer, and broadband. As far as ineligible uses, you are not allowed to use the funds for extraordinary pension contributions. Infrastructure is allowed in some areas of the plan, but not allowed in others. I think there is some flexibility if you go through some of the Treasury guidance that may allow us to provide for some infrastructure improvements in some other areas that are shown here, but we have to closely review the plan or the Act as it relates to that. It does not allow you to replenish your reserves, the Treasury wants to get out into the community. It does not allow for debt service, legal judgments, or settlements. And the last one there does make, it seemed to make sense, that it does not allow for cash match for federal grants. So in other words, you can't use federal dollars as a match for federal dollars. Under the revenue replacement area, where we have a little bit more flexibility, we can do some infrastructure projects. Some of the other things mentioned in the Act are cybersecurity, health services, environmental remediation, educational services, and then some public safety-type services. While it mentions those things specifically, this is where we do have a lot more flexibility in the use of the funds. As long as we're using them for government-type, governmental-type services, we should be allowed to use them for a lot of different uses. Again, you can see the ineligible uses there that I just mentioned. I'm not going to go through all of these bullet points, but I just wanted you to be aware that while that state municipal piece is $360 billion, there are, if there's another $1.55 trillion associated with the American Rescue Act plan, it does provide for other services from that funding source that are not going to be flowing through us, some of them will actually. The Emergency Rental Assistance Program, we have received some dollars there, which we're currently utilizing. But you can see that there are other dollars that are available for healthcare, for individuals and families, small businesses, schools, childcare, there's some childcare grants. So this is important because as we focus on our plan, this is one of the things that we want to be aware of, that we don't necessarily duplicate some funding that's already available out there in other areas of the Act. One of the things that's included in the plan that we've presented to you today is to basically establish some guiding principles. Some of those would be to focus on projects, programs that are not available through other funding sources. We're asking you to develop a plan of investment today, and because of that, we are hopeful that, you know, we can minimize the amount of unsolicited funding requests that might not be necessarily in line with the plan that we adopted today. We're asking you, another guiding principle is to select investments with a broad community impact, which prioritize is underserved involvement rural communities. We want to make sure that we always are aware that, had discussions already with the City of Tampa about making sure that we're in contact with each other. There may be opportunities to partner with other local municipalities or other nonprofits or businesses out in the community to deliver services. We want to make sure that because the funds are one-time in nature, that we want to try to minimize necessarily temporary programs, and we want to be judicious in the creation of those. We want to try to minimize administrative efforts in relation to delivering these dollars out into the community. And certainly, we want to make sure we're using some sound financial management practices as we go along. The last slide I have here today is just basically, you can see a table of contents that's included with the plan. Commissioners, I know we met with each of you to go over the organization of the plan. We have 32 potential investment options that are available under the plan. We've kind of structured each of those options such that there's a statement of need, there's an overview of an implementation strategy, there's a potential estimated cost range, which at this point is very, probably are very soft figures, which will be solidified as we go along. Generally, as Bonnie had mentioned, we anticipate that we're going to be bringing each of these back to you individually, so you can either approve programs, you can approve agreements that might be required, or, you know, so that the board has, you know, control over the implementation of a plan. As an example, the item that I'm going to be presenting to you subsequently to this item is asking you to establish a CIP project in the fiscal year '22 budget. We look at the plan as kind of a starting point, and it's not something, we wanted to make sure that it's as flexible as possible. We have three years to extend the funds. I can tell you since, you know, we developed the options that we have here, I've already had, we've already had a couple of additional suggestions come into us just over the last few days for some additional projects. So that's why we want to keep this as flexible as possible. I'm pretty sure that we will not do everything that we have on the list today, but I'm also pretty sure that we will do some additional, we will do some additional things that are not included on the list today. So this is just basically a starting point. It's a list, you know, some of the examples of the things that we have on this list. We have some healthcare options, which should include dressing substance abuse, mental health, health literacy, safety net services. We always want to keep our nonprofits in mind. They're very helpful to us in helping to get very critical services out to the community. Workforce training, tourism support. We have the opportunity, I think, in the plan, we really want us to focus on those underserved areas, so services within qualified census tracts, certainly affordable housing, safety needs such as additional DVE, maybe some additional facility modifications. We want to help our constitutional officers if they have some additional needs. Fire rescue is also, we've got several options in here for fire rescue, including some station replacements, potentially a new fire warehouse associated with fire rescue, a new station alerting system. We've got a number of transportation options in here. And then again, the plan does allow for water projects, such as stuff like the sewers, maybe some water connections, LPSS, addressing that need. And then finally, stormwater and broadband services. And finally, I guess the thing that we wanted to mention also is, you know, we want to make sure that we're being very transparent with the plan as we go along. So we're going to continue to do what we have been doing, which is we're going to bring back the staff report at every meeting. It will identify for you what we've done so far, the current projects in the plan, and any expenditures that we've had associated with the plan, because we want to make sure, again, that the board is very invested in this and knows where we are at all times. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. And at this time, I'll recognize Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments. I guess my first is a question for Bonnie, and I think I know the answer, but I just want to get it on the record. What we have in front of us is essentially a framework or guiding principles. Is that accurate?
Yes.
And it will be fluid, and changes can be made by the board as long as they comply with the statute? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't have any issues with the categories. In fact, I particularly support resurfacing, fire station replacements, tourism marketing, and park improvements. However, I do not agree with some of the estimated budget range for some of the groups. For example, we heard moving comments this morning from Mr. Bowles and Mr. Bone regarding our fire rescue needs. We know all the needs that we have in fire rescue and how far behind we are in building new fire stations. As Mr. Bowles and Mr. Bone stated, that the community needs are well documented and that we need to implement the master plan. I think the five station replacements are a great start, but we certainly need to do much better as quickly as we possibly can. And then my other comment is, five to 15 million is not nearly enough for park improvements. And I believe that the dollars should not be limited to existing park improvements, but should also be able to be used for new park construction. So with that, I think this is a great foundation and a great start, but certainly, at least in my opinion, we're going to need to massage and, you know, make some changes as we move forward. Thank you.
Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Thank you. And I also think that this is really an excellent start on our ability to make a down payment on so many things that this board has identified as priorities going forward. And just to reiterate what Commissioner Hagan And just to reiterate what Commissioner Hagan pointed out, these are broad categories. And it means that throughout the course, my understanding administrator-wise, throughout the course of the next year, we are going to be on a regular basis entertaining agenda items that will appropriate this money individually toward projects in these broad categories that are outlined here, correct?
That is correct, and we will be reporting ongoing as well.
So, you know, I completely agree with Commissioner Hagan about the need for augmenting our fire rescue capabilities. I know that all of us that are sitting up here at various times have talked about that. And also, of course, public health. Public health is what has caused this problem to begin with. I think it is what lit the fire under the federal government to distribute this money. And there are an awful lot of great things that we can do to serve our community from a public health perspective. And then finally, I just want to say that one of the core missions of this program, to my understanding, has to do with the issue of equity. And so as we look at all of these expenditures, I know that we're going to want to look through an equitable lens. And that means making sure to really diversify our spending in a way that it impacts as many people as possible. The road improvements are outstanding. I think that we've all, you know, talked extensively about water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure. But again, public health and safety, and I think that's a broad enough category to include a lot of things, public health and safety through an equitable lens, in my view, is the guiding principle that I'm going to be looking in terms of how we spend this money. And I really, I think that we have a once in a generation opportunity here to really impact the community in a positive way. And I want to compliment the administrator and the staff on so quickly putting together a framework that'll allow us to hit the ground running and get this money out there as quickly as possible. So thank you.
And I see no other comments at this time, so do I have a motion? Yes. Yes, Commissioner Overman.
Thank you. And I'll make this brief, because Commissioner Hagan and Cohen both pointed out things that I agree with wholeheartedly. As it relates to the decision that was made this morning to pull $2.4 million from this pool of resources, under your basic framework, we, in, under water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure category, you've got an estimated budget of $86 million to $108 million. Is that where that money would, out of that bucket, would that be allocated, as I understand the decision that was made this morning?
We could pull it from there. We have broad ranges, so I think we have some flexibility on that. We'll bring that back for your consideration.
Good. And I appreciate that. Thank you, because it matters. Some of these other broad ranges that we've categorized, you know, if you, for example, public health, we've only really allocated in this particular broad range of category an estimated budget of, let's see, where is that number? In public health response is $25 to $37 million. So 2.4 out of that bucket is a pretty big piece as opposed to some of the other ranges. And I think that's where, I hear Commissioner Cohen's comments are, where we prioritize how the dollars go in these various different categories really do need to be reviewed from a point of equity. And the lens that we are, will be adopting when it comes to equity treatment as well as equity and how our policies deliver on our investments to our citizens and our communities. So thank you very much for the, I just, I have to think of buckets coming out of based on the broad ranges. So I appreciate, looking forward to having this process evolve over the next year or two. Thank you.
And I don't think I see any other commissioners ready to speak at this time. I'll just say that I'm, I've been, and I think it was you, Commissioner Myers, that talked about this being a third budget that we have, and that is true, and it's a robust budget at $285 million. And I have just been really, this staff has been, and Mr. Fessler and others in our budget staff, they, I just think that the work that's been put forward in the framework that's been put forward has been, one, that has been really attentive to issues like equity, but also the needs and the needs that, that have gone too long without attention. And, you know, I also think it's been done with some consideration to not only what our needs are, but some of the changes that we've made. And I think about that with fire rescue, quite frankly, where for decades, almost four decades, we were collecting $250,000 a year in impact fees, and we upped that by a good amount to get it to $2.5 million or $3 million a year. And, I mean, that was only reasonable. We were nowhere near paying for any of the impacts that we had made for so many years. It was just astonishing. So we are getting in, in some regards, resources in that way, and as well for parks, which we had ignored for too long and increased quite a bit, as we should have, you know, just to, in terms of building a community, a place to live for the future, that was, had reasonable resources for our residents here. But I'd just like to say that I think that the categories and amounts, and I'll just wait to see further, but I'm pleased with the set asides as they exist, and we can, you know, as has been pointed out, this can be looked at more closely as we move forward. But I'd like to, you know, I just think, I have been particularly with water, sewer, and broadband, think it's extremely important in terms of the urban service area and possibilities for economic development, development. And also for, I mean, I think of, you know, Wi-Fi can be, I mean, what we've seen, the impacts that we've had on education now through the lack of Wi-Fi in the county, which I think there's many people that think that we are fully served and are shocked to hear that somehow we have, we don't, we have communities that don't have Wi-Fi access, or at least sufficient Wi-Fi access by any means. So I think it's really, these, this budget outlines are a good philosophy as we move forward, and we can keep looking at it. But I, you know, I think it gives attention and thoughtfulness to all the areas that many of the commissioners have expressed, have needed attention over the years. So I'm very much appreciative and supportive of this. And I think we, do we have a motion by?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Cohen, and seconded by Commissioner Myers. And seeing no further discussion at this time, please do a roll call vote.
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And Ms. Wise. I'll just note that we're going over noon. I know it's been an issue, but it looks like we can finish this out pretty quickly, so.
Very good. And the next item, a similar companion item to the item you just passed, item B3, speaking about allocating $35 million of these funds for road resurfacing. And Tom Fessler will present this item as well.
Yes. Commissioners, item B3 is asking you to direct county administration to establish a roadway pavement treatment capital improvement project with a $35 million budget funded by American Rescue Plan dollars for inclusion in the fiscal year 22 capital improvement program. This will be considered at the point that you adopt the budget for fiscal year 22 on September 23, 2021. We're also asking you to direct county administration to bring back a proposed project list associated with those dollars to the board for consideration no later than the second board meeting in November. John Lyons is also available if there are any questions related to projects.
Move the item.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hagan, you made a motion, and seconded by Commissioner Cohen.
Commissioner White seconds.
Commissioner White and Commissioner Cohen seconds. Okay. And Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. And this is certainly a priority. It has been a priority of this board for some time. It's a priority of our citizens. Two, I will, I would just say that this is one of the categories where I think your point about equity would be very important, so that, because we have roads that are, where the asphalt has crumbled into rubble and potholes in every corner of our county. And it's going to be very important that citizens throughout our county see that they are, their needs for good roads are being addressed equitably throughout the county.
Thank you. And seeing no further comments, I'd just like to, Ms. Wise, I'd like to just thank you, because I think I've seen on your part just a real commitment to putting resources into road repair and maintenance. And that, to me, is, you know, first, do no harm. Let's, you know, protect our assets now, protect our system now. And I think that we've been remiss for years in not doing that. In fact, I just, you know, until we repair and replace and have the budget to go forward with every square inch of pavement we already have, it's just costing us money to be ignoring or, and not have a good repair on the assets that we have out there. So I applaud, because I know that that has been a focus for you and of staff at this time, to really be beating the bushes for any dollars out there to do that. So I thank you in that regard. Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to add, I do echo the comments that have already been said, but as we start these construction projects, if we could put signage that says that's funded by the American Rescue Funds, so that the community would know where the dollars are coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. And seeing no further comments, we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, seconded by Commissioners Cohen and White at this time. And can we have a roll call vote?
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. And moving right along, Ms. Wise.
And thank you. We want to continue, right? All right. Item F1 is Commissioner Overman's item, asking a staff to write a letter regarding the Sunshine Skyway Bridge regarding commemorating Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize that we typically, and we will be recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the month of October. And we received a wonderful request to eliminate, to illuminate, illuminate the Bob Graham Sunshine Skyway Bridge in pink during the month of October for Breast Cancer Awareness from Ms. Janet Cook with Aveda Institutes of Florida. The Florida Department of Transportation has indicated that that approval of this requires a letter of support from Hillsborough, Pinellas, and Manatee Counties. And Ms. Cook has been hard at work at obtaining the letters of support from Manatee and Pinellas, which I've included in the backup for this item. As such, with today's favorable, we'll be able to provide the last letter of support necessary to light up the Sunshine Skyway Bridge. And so I'll note that FDOT actually will only light it up for one week, and since we're not sure what week that will be, my motion will include the entire month, as an actual week will be chosen by Florida Department of Transportation. So with that, I'd like to move to direct staff to prepare a letter of support for the chair's signature to the Florida Department of Transportation to light up the Bob Graham Sunshine Skyway Bridge pink during the month of October to commemorate Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Overman, seconded by Commissioner Myers. And did I hear someone else? Okay. And seeing no further discussion, can you do a roll call vote?
Kemp.
Yes.
Cohen.
Yes.
Hagan.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Overman.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. And I guess I, we've had some other, I'll just say, we've had other requests. It's a kind of new policy by FDOT at this time, but not, as I understand, required by law. Ms. Beck, is that true?
I don't know of any legal requirement, but it is something that's being requested by FDOT.
And so we're having numerous requests, so I think we're, I just put on the record that I've asked the administrator to please start to, because I've had numerous requests made to my office, to please look at a process for dealing with this, and in a way, since this has become a new issue.
We'll look into that, see if there's a way to streamline the process.
Thank you. Thank you. And Ms. Wise.
Thank you. The next item is to receive a report on Hillsborough County Emergency Messaging. And Anna Mendez is here to present this item, and Leana Lopez is available for any questions as well.
Hello, everybody. Chris, please pull up the presentation. All right, excellent, thank you. My name is Anna. I am the PR and Marketing Division Director for Communications and Digital Media. Thank you so much for the opportunity to bring you on how communications and digital media provides critical and timely emergency messaging for the Hillsborough County community. CDM, the work that CDM does would not be possible without strong partnerships within the community. We have over 140 members of our JIC team and other community partners that we message through. We also have great relationships and great support with our county department. So thank you to everybody for helping us out. It does take a village. So you may be asking yourself, how do we get started? The next slide, please. Well, research is at the forefront of everything that we do. For example, this past year, we conducted a survey to gauge the community's interest in vaccination. We received over 400,000 responses and close to 10,000 comments as part of that survey. We take that data that we collect, we analyze it, and this helps us guide us in our messaging effort. We work to make these decisions based off of data. We also work with industry leaders, subject matter experts, community influencers, like our sports teams, personalities that live in the area, as well as our Spanish language partners to disseminate information. A sampling of our messaging channels can be found on this PowerPoint presentation on this slide, and they include media relations, social media messaging, collateral development, HTV support, a dedicated web portal, which is Stay Safe on the Hillsborough County website, community partner outreach, partnerships with the Joint Information Center, HFL Alert, and the Call Center. There are many times that the county is the lead for messaging, but there are also times that we ask, that our partners ask us to support their public education efforts and stories. Next slide, please. One of the most effective ways to get information out into the community is through our trusted partnerships with local and national media. We share information with the media and disseminate information in various ways. Use news releases, media briefings, interviews. We also provide the media with ready-to-go photos, interviews, and videos that can be used during their broadcast, on their web stories, and on their social channels. Next slide, please. CDM also utilizes social media platforms to inform and educate the public. You can find us on Facebook, LinkedIn, Twitter, TikTok, YouTube, and Next. During the pandemic, this was During the pandemic, this was a vital way to get information out into the community. For example, we hosted a Facebook Live series with a panel of medical experts out in the community to discuss COVID-related matters. We also participated in Spanish-language Facebook Lives to make sure that that information was getting out into the community and those who are Spanish speakers. During a storm, we also utilize these tools to get familiar information out, as well as receive two-way communication. During a storm, these conversations that we have with individuals can be helpful in mitigating rumors or getting additional information out into the community. It really does put us right into the conversation as it happens. Next slide, please. CDM also creates custom content. So, for instance, we have the disaster guide that we work on with OEM. There are flyers that we put out into the community on various topics related, for example, COVID matters, or it could be something for assistance once a storm passes, but also create social media graphics and paid advertising as well. All of this information and these collateral pieces are shared with our community partners through our JIC meetings or one-offs with other partners and neighborhood organizations as well. We want to make sure that this information is getting out to those who have access to digital and those that do not. So that's why those partnerships and grassroots-level marketing is so important. And also, when appropriate, support messaging and public education, we also employ paid advertising in the form of digital advertising, billboards, radio, TV, and print advertisements. Next slide, please. Our HTV team plays a huge role in emergency messaging as well. They cover meetings through live streaming, they create PSAs, HTV bulletins, and media practices. They're a really important part of our toolset. For example, during a storm, we conduct briefings in an order, media briefings in keeping, in order to provide our community with timely and critical life-saving information. Those are scheduled, and people look forward to that, make sure that they're getting the information they need. Next slide, please. I think many of you are familiar with this. On our website, we have created a central hub of information. It is hcslgov.net/staysafe. This has been a vital hub to get information out about COVID resources, as well as storm messaging and preparation. Just this past year, collectively, our vaccine pages are getting tested pages, and our Stay Safe pages received over 5.2 million views. It's really become the central point, people know to come here to look for information, whether we're in time of a storm and the hurricane's coming, they want to make sure that they have preparedness information, or they know where they can get resource information once the storm passes. This is a critical component to our messaging toolkit. Next slide, please. And I mentioned this before, we really rely on those community partners to help amplify our message. We can't do it alone. So we put signage out in the community. You'll see on this, there's an example of COVID testing signage. These signs work very effectively. They're placed out into the community in key areas where there's high visibility at inner city. They also work very closely with neighborhood relations and their contacts that they have with local businesses, neighborhood associations, and other organizations to make sure that we're pushing that messaging out to individuals in the community at a grassroots level. Next slide, please. And the Joint Information Center. None of this could be possible without our partners. I mentioned before, there's about 140 individuals who sit on the Joint Information Center. It's also known as the JIC. Members are from other jurisdictions, constitutionals, government organizations, healthcare organizations, sports teams, organizational, excuse me, educational organizations. And when activated, we use the JIC to discuss and plan campaigns or discussions that organizations have, and we also utilize it to help each other push messaging out for our various organizations. Next slide, please. Another very important tool is HCSL Alert. I'm going to do a little selfish plug here. If you have not signed up to receive alerts from the county, please do so. You can do that on our website, which is hcslgov.net/staysafe, and there's an HCSL Alert button there. And this pushes out information. On the onset of COVID, we wanted to push out the testing centers there, so we can typically do that through text messages, voicemails, and emails to those that have signed up to receive these alerts. There's also opportunity to push out event information and critical weather updates pushed out here. In the time of a storm, we can also use this platform to notify residents when there's an evacuation, evacuation being called for a particular area, and we can target that particular area to get that message. Again, if you have not subscribed, please do so. Next slide, please. The customer call center serves as a lifeline to the community in the time of emergency. They play a vital role for those that do not have access to the internet. They can answer questions and direct folks to the right resources and give them contact information. This is incredibly important when we're in the time of uncertainty like we are with COVID, and people need access to information that's credible and reliable and very quickly. Next slide, please. Again, thank you so much for your time. That's just a quick little snapshot into what we do and how we use different platforms for emergency messaging. As you can see here, all of our social channels are listed. You can find us at HillsboroughFL. And if you're out there and chatting, please use the hashtag #Staysafe. At this time, Teri Cordova-Hewitt and I are available for any questions.
Thank you, and I see no commissioners' questions at this time, but thank you very much for that presentation. We very much appreciate the information. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And with that, Ms. Wise?
Thank you. The last item, oh, sorry, the next item are future discussion items, and then we do have the item that was removed from consent.
Okay, and we'll take the item removed from consent. That's A31, correct, Commissioner Smith? Okay, and with that, Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
Thank you. Commissioners, I pulled this item because it's a, it's a list of consultants we're about to hire, and we've had serious problems in the past with one of the consultants on this list. But once we pass this item, we will have no say over which of these firms is hired to prepare reports informing us and making recommendations to us for land development policy and regulations. We will be relying on these consultants to shape our land development policy and regulations. This is our only opportunity to have any say on that list of consultants. After our approval of this list, some of these consultants will be bringing back studies to us, fully formed, and then it will be very difficult for us to question their findings. The topic of their studies will be things like what is listed in the RFQ, planning initiatives in the category of land development policy and regulations, special districts and overlays, mixed-use districts, transfer of development rights, vision and scenario planning, land use and transportation integration, and other. This is a request for qualifications, and based on our previous experience with Tyndale Oliver for our mobility fee study, I have lost confidence in their qualifications to guide any policy changes on these specific land development issues. The mobility fee study they produced for us in early 2019, before a couple of you got here, was seriously flawed, and the data and the results were so skewed that it had to be done over. Their study for mobility fees actually proposed lowering mobility fees, even though, of course, the cost of road improvements had gone up in the years prior. And yet they proposed lowering mobility fees, although that fact was masked by the way they presented the data. They put the old fees that we currently had at that time side by side in a chart with the new fees they were proposing to compare them. But the comparison looked like, oh, all right, the new fees are going to be higher, but that was only because, and this was not at all obvious, they were comparing the old fee at 80% to the new fee at 100%. So it looked like the new one was higher. But if you compared the old to the new, apples to apples, with both at 100%, you found that the new one was actually lower, in most cases, than the old one, except for affordable housing, which was, was higher. And it was, it was lower because the data was faulty, not to say skewed. My staff and I had to comb through their study and pull out the erroneous and misleading data ourselves to show staff and the board. And I recall other commissioners' staff also working in the same way to go over their report to show what was wrong. So finally, they did have to go over the, do over the study more correctly. Our staff had to be very involved in providing correct data, and it was, it was just a big failure of this consultant. If that same consultant stays on this list of consultants, and they get paid out of this million-dollar fund to do another land development study for us, our staff is going to have to go over it all with a fine-tooth comb behind them. And I am certainly not going to be able to take it on face value and just trust it without double-checking it myself. So I have a couple of questions for staff before I'll make a motion. For, in the first place, it is my understanding there was an evaluation committee that put this list together from all the applicants. My first question is, was any applicant rejected in that process? Is anyone here who can answer that?
We have Scott Stromer, Procurement Director, on the line, and he can answer specific questions regarding the procurement process.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, it's Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. I'm just going to pull up that backup to see.
Can we have just a little more volume?
Oh, I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, better with you coming closer.
Okay. I'll have to pull up that backup real quick here. Let me see. I don't recall if anyone rejected. It looks like all eight are recommended. I don't see that anywhere rejected. It looks like we had eight respondents, and there are eight recommendations.
So, right, so eight consultants applied, and that's...
Were rejected. And, you know, by the way, I'll point out that only one of these eight firms has offered any commitment to the county's disadvantaged minority and disadvantaged women business enterprise program. Food for thought. But what I would ask too is, was there any consideration in going over this list of eight consultants of past performance of the candidates with the county, including the episode that I mentioned of the failure of one of these consultants?
Well, yes, as presumed. The evaluation committee, when they go through those applications and they go through proposals, they are going to look at the proposal, they're going to consider the past performance and their methodology for moving forward, whatever they presented in their proposals. So yes, they would. And if they've had direct experience with the county, certainly, I expected the committee would have considered that.
I'm sorry, you would have expected the, this evaluation committee to have considered the past performance of these consultants in their past work with the county?
Yes.
Thank you. That's, that's it for my questions. Nevertheless, my motion will be to remand the matter back to the evaluation committee to reconsider the past performance with the county of these applicants and before bringing this back again to the board.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith. Do we have a second? Is there a second? Okay, then I'm going to, if we don't have a second, I'm going to pass the gavel to Commissioner Overman and second the motion, and not just for discussion, but for strong support, absolutely, because I think what happened to this commission, and I know that Commissioners Cohen and Myers were not present during that time, but the burden that was put on myself, Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Overman to review those mobility fees, which were, I'm, I'm sorry, that was just, it, it was beyond the pale. And I have to say that I do not have confidence at this time, and I, also, Mr. Stromer, I'd just like to, do you know if, in particular, that issue of Tyndale Oliver with the mobility fees was brought to the attention of that reviewing committee?
That I don't know. I have to go back and listen to the meeting. I just, I just don't know.
Because, you know, I wouldn't normally do this, but I really thought it was extremely, so extreme that it really deserves this sanction bias at this time, because I really don't have confidence at all. I mean, the law, the statutory, the law by the state of Florida said things like they had to give recent estimates and, and local, within, you know, jurisdictions. And there were like sidewalk estimates from 1998 by, I don't know, I think it was like Nebraska or something. They had a road through a cemetery in Jacksonville as their, you know, guidepost for cost of roads. And then our own road here in the county was tens of millions of dollars off, and it was right in our own county records. I brought that forward at that meeting, the difference in those two costs and the, you know, how that skewed what should not have been a burden for us as commissioners to look at that and present that. And I just thought it was just remarkably, you know, disingenuous. And I just, I just think that there's a, you know, I can see in the future that there might be opportunities again to look, but the fact that this may not have been taken into consideration that, you know, that I just, again, I like Commissioner Smith, just really don't have faith at this time. Not that that can't be repaired in the future, but due to that very extreme experience that I don't think we should have been subject to here as commissioners, I'll support Commissioner Smith's motion. I don't know if you can see this, Commissioner Overman, but Commissioner Hagan and Commissioner Myers have raised their hands.
Okay, assuming Commissioner Hagan raises his hand first. Okay, so I'll recognize you, Commissioner Hagan.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. I'm not going to support the motion. I fully support staff's work on this. I'm not going to cherry pick consultants because I essentially don't like their findings. If we, or if Commissioner or staff felt that their prior work was, was improper or not up to speed, then perhaps action should have been taken then, but they followed the process, went through everything, and I'm not going to, I'm not going to change it after they've already been awarded.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagan. Commissioner Myers, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. It appears there were some hiccups with the vendor Tyndale Oliver, but I think at the time, when the issues were raised on the mobility fees, staff and the board at that time should have went back to procurement to bring that to their attention. So now we're saying today, what happened in 2019, let's hold up all the other vendors if we remand this back, to go back, but let's just let Tyndale Oliver go back and let the staff review that contract. staff review that contract and move for approval on the others that are listed, because that's the only one that is in question.
Are there any other hands?
Commissioner Smith has her hand up.
Commissioner Smith, you're recognized.
I, I completely agree with you, Commissioner Myers. And in looking into this item, I worked on that, various, what options like that were available to us. I would have liked to be here and, and be able to just pick out one and remand that one for further consideration, but I was told that the procurement process doesn't allow that, and so this motion was recommended to me. And Ms. Beck, would you like to...
Yeah, let me just clarify, Commissioner. You're absolutely correct that we did recommend that it would be best in the process to remand back to the evaluation committee, but I, I don't believe we opined on whether you could just remand one. So I believe that would be acceptable. I would like to hear if Sam Hamilton is on the line, and if he concurs that that would be acceptable, just to make sure I didn't misunderstand anything. But as long as it's remanded, that's, that's in keeping with the county process. And actually, Scott Stromer, too, if you have an objection to that.
Mr. Hamilton, are you available?
Yeah, I'm trying to stream here like that. Can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Great, great. Yeah, I think that's, I think that would be acceptable. The board does have discretion. Obviously, they have that.
Okay. Mr. Stromers, did you have a comment?
No, I agree. I mean, for the committee, it would give their chance to review those qualifications, and if it did pass that, it would come back separately to the board.
Okay, great. And I, I would like to offer a comment unless there's another hand or an offer to amend the original motion, but I can recall...
Commissioner Smith has her hand at this moment.
And Commissioner, Commissioner White does as well.
Okay, great, great. Okay, Commissioner Smith, I'll recognize you, please.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Myers. I think this is an excellent way to address this. As I say, I was looking for something like this and, and, you know, couldn't quite put our finger on it, but I would like to withdraw my previous motion and make the motion to accept the list as is, but to remand the one applicant, Tyndale Oliver, for review by the evaluation committee with special consideration of past performance of that candidate and with, with the suggestion that they review the meetings that we had, which were a couple, a couple of meetings where we were sorting out that report that they gave and had to bring fresh data back and take a look at, at what that issue was. So that would be my motion.
Okay, so you withdrawn the original motion and provided an alternative motion. Who, I hear is second.
Second.
Okay.
Commissioner Myers offered the second.
And with that, I think I could take it from...
Take that?
Yeah. So we have, and I don't know if there's, it doesn't look like...
Why isn't the hand raised?
I think, actually, Commissioner Overman, did you want to comment at this time?
I, I actually, I did, and then Commissioner White does have his hand raised. I, I do recall that exercise. It was quite painful. And I think just out of, and really not so much in this particular circumstance, but I do believe that it's critically important as we move forward on so many different items, that it is important that when we have had historically strong relationships with certain consultants, that it's important to recognize past performance or any issues that would have required a significant amount of staff, time, and effort, as well as obviously our, the board's effort to address, going back to the drawing table, when, when issues are being addressed by and outsourced to consultants. We require and demand performance in so many different ways of our citizens and other entities. I think it's important that we have a standard of making sure that we do look at past performance in those relationships that we have to assure that we're offering the best service and getting the best value for the services that we do. We've done a great job on the procurement side, but I think in the evaluation side, we could use some improvements, as indicated in this particular circumstance, and I'll stop there.
Thank you. And Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to ask Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Stromer, if we, if we only remand the Tyndale Oliver decision, how do we not run into a legal problem with respect to them being subjected to different review criteria than the other firms?
If I could address that, I, I think the, what the request is, is to make sure, as I understand it at least, is that the evaluation committee, I think the request is to make sure that they have considered all aspects of past performance, as I understand it. And in this case, there is, there is obviously one discrete area of past performance that some of the commissioners would like to have reviewed. I mean, that's, that's how I understand the motion, so I don't know...
Why is it, why is it that we wouldn't need to review past performance with the other awardees as well?
Commissioners, I understand the request, it's really, it's a function of one particular area of past performance. I guess it had to do with the mobility fee study, and I'm not aware that any of the other consultants were involved in that. I mean, if they were, I could definitely, you know, I could definitely see the, the differing treatment, but I, my understanding is it was just the one consultant that was involved in the particular past performance that's been noted by some of the commissioners, as I understand it.
Well, why, well, why can't, well, well, why can't the board just say, we're just not happy with their past performance with respect to the mobility fee issue and just vote them up or down today based on that?
I would, I would suggest the board has discretion to do that if it sees fit.
Yeah, I don't, I think we're on a slippery slope to remand this back to the procurement committee. You know, I think we, you know, if, if, if there's an issue with their performance as it relates to the mobility fee study, if we have latitude to just vote them up or down based upon that, you know, why even waste the time of, of getting it back in front of the, the review committee? And I, and I'm worried, and I, I hear what you're telling me, and I have the utmost respect for, for, for you, Sam, and, and for you, Scott, but, you know, I, I sure don't like the idea of singling one firm out to have to go back through the review process. If there's an issue with Tyndale Oliver, let's just vote them up or down today. That's, that, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. And I think Ms. Beck would like to speak to that.
Just to supplement that.
Your mic is not...
Thank you. Just to supplement that, my only comment would be on, on this is, the, the best practice, so to speak, with a procurement process like this, is to let that process play out with the evaluation committee looking at it. That is what Scott Stromer has recommended in this case. And also, the other concern I have is that two of the commissioners weren't as familiar that, that might give them time to do some due diligence as well. And, and so I think the best recommendation here is for the procurement process to stick to that practice.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen, you're recognized.
Yeah, I was just going to respectfully disagree with Commissioner White. I think a remand is a much more appropriate measure for us to take, given exactly what the county attorney just pointed out, that at least two of us are not in a position to make a decision based on the past performance. And I think by confining this to an issue of past performance related to a specific contract, it gives a, a reason for the, 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 the treatment being a little bit different without, I, holding everyone else, all the other successful bidders hostage to the, to the, to the process. So I, I agree with the motion that's on the floor. I think it's a better way of handling it.
Okay, and I don't think I see any further hands raised at this point. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Myers, and seeing no other discussion, please do a roll call vote.
Kemp?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Hagan?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Overman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
White?
No.
Motion carried five to two. Commissioners Hagan and White voted no.
Thank you. And with that, Ms. Wise, I think we're on to future items?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And I do not see any hands or any future items at this time, so seeing none, we stand adjourned.